Hello, this is Glendale City Council, and we are going to have closed session. I will call the closed session meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Brotman.
Yes.
Devine?
I mean here, sorry, here.
Devine?
Here.
Kasakian?
Here.
Najarian?
Here.
Mayor Agajanian?
Present. Thank you, Mr. Agajanian. Please read the closed session items into the record.
Conference with legal counsel pending litigation, City of Glendale, Atall versus Kemp Brothers Construction Incorporated, Atall LASC, case number 19STCV37455.
Thank you. Mr. Garcia, do you anticipate reporting out on the closed session items?
Mr. Mayor, we do not anticipate reporting out.
We will now recess to closed session, but before we go, is there any phone calls?
Mayor, there are no phone calls.
No phone calls?
No phone calls.
Anyway, those who are watching us, we will take callers if you wish to call before going to the closed session. So we will wait for 30 seconds. See if there will be any interest by anyone to call. And 30 seconds, please. Do we have the 30 seconds, Mr. Agajanian?
10 more seconds.
Okay, we will wait for 10 more seconds. Okay, again, we will take callers. We are going to a closed session. The clerk read the closed session items. If anybody is interested to call and express himself or herself, you can do it at this moment. No?
No more, no calls.
Okay, we will now recess into closed session. Thank you. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the March 30, 2021 Glendale City Council meeting. Due to evolving situation with COVID-19 and health recommendations from LA County Health Departments, the Glendale City Council meeting will be available to the public electronically. Due to social distancing requirements, the public will not be able to attend the meeting. This meeting can be viewed on local cable spectrum and Charter Cable Channel 6 and AT&amp;T U-verse Channel 99. You may also stream online through our website, by scrolling all the way to the bottom of the webpage and selecting live streaming, which is the third icon from the left. For public comments and questions during the meeting, call 818-937-8100, which is on the screen. Please do not call in advance of the agenda item. With this being said, may I have roll call, please?
Councilmember Brotman.
Here.
Devine?
Here.
Kasakian?
Here.
Najarian?
Here.
And Mayor Agajanian?
Present. Okay, well, thank you, Mr. Agajanian. I will lead the flag salute. Please join me in the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which is in its land. One nation, America, in its own right. It is just for all.
Mr. Agajanian?
Please remain standing for tonight's invocation. Let us join in prayer for our city as we ask for guidance and wisdom for tonight's meeting. We pray for safe neighborhoods and prosperity and ask that we work together to make Glendale a wonderful place for everyone who lives and works here. We pray for all of this and for peace tonight and always. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Next item, please.
Next item would be the agenda for the March 30, 2021. Regular meeting of the Glendale City Council was posted on March 23, 2021 on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Next item would be three presentation and appointments. 3A would be agenda preview for the meeting of Tuesday, April 6, 2021, will be read in by John Tuktayan, Deputy City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Tuktayan.
Good evening, Mayor Agajanian, and members of the City Council. Next week's Housing Authority meeting in the afternoon will have one item on the agenda, and that will be a public hearing and approval of the Section 8 Public Housing Agency annual plan for fiscal year 2122. In the evening for City Council, there is only one item under consent, which is the approval of the minutes, followed by potentially an adoption of an ordinance, depending on how the discussion goes tonight regarding amendment of Title 8 of the Glendale Municipal Code prohibiting the use of polystyrene and single-use plastic products at certain city-managed, city-run, and city-sponsored events. Under action items, we have three items. The first is from Water and Power regarding the Substation Transformer, Load Tap Changer, and Regulator Inspection, Repair and Testing Services Contract. The second will be a report from Public Works regarding the completion of negotiations and finalization of the commercial solid waste franchise contracts. And finally, a report from Community Development regarding the direction on Future of Slow Streets Program. And the final item on next week's agenda is a report from Public Works regarding the City of Glendale's pavement management program. That concludes the report for next week.
Thank you, Mr. Tuktayan. I make it easier for you, Mr. Agajanian. Next is proclamation designating April as Sexual Assault Awareness Month. And I have proclamation here. This is the proclamation, and I will read it. Sexual Assault Awareness Month. Whereas the United States government has declared April as Sexual Assault Awareness Month, whereas on Denim Day, April 28, 2021, millions of people across the world will wear jeans with a purpose. Support survivors and educate themselves and others about all forms of sexual violence. And whereas rape, sexual assault, and sexual harassment harm our community. And statistics show that one in five women and one in 67 men have experienced rape or attempted rape sometime in their lives. Child sexual abuse prevention must be a priority to confront the reality that one in four girls and one in six boys will experience a sexual assault before age 18. And whereas with proper education, there is compelling evidence that we can successfully reduce the incidence of this physically and psychologically damaging crime. And whereas Sexual Assault Awareness Month and Denim, they are intended to draw attention to the fact that rape and sexual assault are serious issues in our society, where instituted to call attention to misconceptions and misinformation about rape and sexual assault. And the problem that many in society remain disturbingly uninformed with respect to issues of assault and rape, allowing these crimes to persist and victims, survivors, to be re-victimized. And whereas prevention is possible when everyone gets involved, to increase education, awareness, and community involvement, to take action to create a safer environment for all. And whereas the members of the Glendale City Council strongly support the efforts of the City of Glendale Commission on Status of Women to educate people in our community about the true impact of rape and sexual assault and what can be done to prevent it. Now, therefore, I, Verjagijanian, Mayor of the City of Glendale, hereby proclaim the month of April 2021 as Sexual Assault Awareness Month and designate April 28, 2021 as Denim Day in Glendale and urge everyone to wear jeans on April 28 to spread the message that there is no excuse and never an invitation to rape. Verjagijanian, Mayor, March 30, 2021. Thank you for listening. And next one. Next one is National Library Week. And this is the proclamation. Very pretty one. I don't know if they can see it. Oh, this way. Oh.
I think we have a commissioner here to accept.
Yeah, Ms. Devine, please, go ahead.
I think we have a commissioner from the Status of Women, Commissioner on the Status of Women, to speak and accept the...
Are they here? I didn't see on the screen.
Arminie Perian is here, Commissioner Perian.
Anybody knows if they are here? Because I didn't see them on the screen. I assume that they are not here. Mr. Gulanyan, are they here?
Yes, sir.
Hello.
Okay, hello.
Hello, Mayor, I'm here. This is our...
There you go.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, Mayor Agajanian, councilmembers and staff. My name is Arminet Perian, and I'm the Vice Chair of the Commission on the Status of Women. On behalf of the CSW, I would like to thank you for this proclamation. Sexual Assault Awareness Month is a time for us to reflect on how sexual assault affects every part of our community. And we need to be able to talk about what is going on if we are going to take action to stop it. Over the past few years, we have had a lot of time to focus on this issue through the Me Too movement, in which more and more survivors are finding their voice and speaking out against perpetrators, hoping that by finally calling them out, they can be stopped. I want to take this time to ask City Council and the community to join the Commission in wearing denim on Denim Day, which will be on Wednesday, April 28 of this year. Denim Day came about over 20 years ago as a result of protests in response to a rape conviction that was overturned simply because the victim wore tight jeans. The women of the Italian Parliament wore jeans in protest, and this movement spread to the Los Angeles region through the Peace Over Violence, a nonprofit violence prevention organization that the Commission has supported. Whether you are out and about or home, wear denim on April 28 to make a social statement and protest against the misconceptions that surround sexual violence. Thank you again for this important and symbolic recognition.
Thank you, Arminet. And as I said, this is for your group, and hopefully, this will serve the committee. Okay, Ms. Devine, you want to add something?
I would just like to commend the Commission for continuing to support Sexual Assault Awareness Month and continue to raise awareness in our community of crimes against women, assault against women and men, and to make sure that... And I'm happy that they're going to encourage the community to wear jeans on April 28. That's everyone in support of this movement. Thank you so much, Arminet, and the Commission.
Thank you.
And I have more.
Yes.
I have more.
Anybody else? Thank you. Anyone else wants to comment? Or I go to the next proclamation then? This is... I saw the proclamation, so if you can see. This is beautiful proclamation for National Library Week. Okay, and I will read the text of it. Whereas the Library Arts and Culture Department will celebrate National Library Week April 4 through April 10, 2021. And whereas this year's theme, "Welcome to Your Library", takes on a new meaning as the library has adopted throughout the past year of the COVID-19 pandemic by providing safe online and contactless services to the community. And whereas Glendale Library Arts and Culture is committed to inclusion, diversity, equity, and anti-racism. And to that end, has added goals to its strategic plan. Engaged staff in anti-racism training and held the ongoing Be the Change series of virtual events and exhibits, including the groundbreaking exhibition, "Reckoning: Racism and Resistance in Glendale". And whereas Glendale Library Arts and Culture and the Arts and Culture Commission have launched the Art Happens Anywhere, AHA, program, COVID-19 Artist Relief Initiative, by sponsoring 17 projects during the COVID-19 pandemic with the purpose of encouraging the expansion of arts and culture activities to benefit the citizens of our community during these unique times. And whereas Library Workers Day on April 6, on April 6, 2021, recognizes the unique contribution of library workers, why Library Giving Day on April 7, 2021 is an excellent time to make a financial contribution to support the library's nonprofit support organizations called the Glendale Library Arts and Culture Trust. And whereas Take Action for Libraries Day is April 8, 2021, when we pause to celebrate the power of all the volunteers who serve our libraries, including our dedicated adult literacy volunteers, the Arts and Culture Commissioners, the Board, the Brand Associates, and the members of the Glendale Library Arts and Culture Trust, including immediate past President Joan Zierhat, who is the library's volunteer of the year. And now, therefore, I, Verjagijanian, Mayor of the City of Glendale, proclaim April 4 through April 10, 2021 as National Library Week in Glendale, California, and invite Glendale residents to visit Library Arts and Culture online through its website, eglendalac.org, to find electronic books, magazines, and newspapers to read, electronic music and movies to stream, and online classes with which to learn. National Library Week, Verjagijanian, Mayor, March 30, 2021. And I don't know who will accept this now. Is there anybody?
Mr. Mayor, Gary Shaffer, Director, Library Arts and Culture.
Thank you.
Thank you so, so much. On behalf of all my colleagues and all the volunteers of Glendale Library Arts and Culture, the Brand Associates, and the Library Arts and Culture Commission, I just want to thank you and the City Council for your consistent and constant support of the library. Libraries do make differences in many people's lives. And each and every day, whether open or serving folks virtually, libraries do positively change lives. So thank you so much for this acknowledgement. We very much appreciate it, and we'll be celebrating all next week.
Thank you, Dr. Shaffer. All right. We go to next item, please.
Next item would be consent items, including minutes, to follow our routine and may be acted upon by one motion. Any member of council or the audience requesting separate consideration may do so by making such request before motion is proposed.
Thank you. Do I have... Anybody wants to move their items?
I'll move the consent calendar.
Thank you. Ms. Devine, you said second? Thank you.
Second, yes.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Brotman?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Kasakian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Mayor Agajanian?
Yes. Next item, please.
Mayor, next item is City Council and Staff Comments.
Okay, I will start with Ms. Devine.
Thank you, thank you. First, thank you, Mayor. First of all, I wanted to send out kudos to Fire Chief Launzes and our fire department because of their at-home vaccination or vaccine program in conjunction with Dignity Health. I understand that they're getting a lot of media coverage. And if our residents didn't see the LA Times today, they might want to check it online. There's an article featuring our fire department and Dignity Health, and pictures as well. And CNN is going to have a bit on April 9 that viewers might want to watch for. So thank you so much for helping out, serving those who cannot get to designated locations, the elderly, the disabled, and those that have health conditions. Thank you for your hard work. Appreciate it, much appreciate it. I also, and I'm sorry that Commissioner Perian left the meeting, but I wanted to thank... I attended a Zoom presentation, Surviving Human Trafficking. And it was sponsored by Serotimus International Glendale, the Commission on the Status of Women and Glendale Community College Classified Council. It was presented by Teresa Flores, who is a survivor of human trafficking. When she was 15, she was approached and was forced into sexual slavery for two years. She's an advocate now and an author of three books. The reason I'm bringing this up, not only it was so informative, however, there was a very alarming, a bit of alarming information that Teresa gave. That was the fact that right now, the hotspots for human trafficking are libraries. And so what I would like tonight is to... And I hope Dr. Shaffer is still with us. I would like to suggest that our library staff, if they have already... If they have not already been educated in spotting human trafficking, that this is maybe an educational program that we should present to them so that they can recognize it and know what to do if they see it. I remember when I was on the commission, the airlines started... American Airlines, I believe, started a program for their flight crews so that they were able to spot human trafficking on their flights. I think it's really important. I know we get a lot of students that come to the libraries. Maybe not so many now, but in the future, we will have many. And I think it's really important for our staff to be able to identify human trafficking and the possibility of it occurring. And Dr. Shaffer, I see you right there. Do you have a program? And if you don't, would you please?
We would be happy to look into that. I am not aware of any program specific for libraries, but perhaps we can be the leaders in that and create it, working with professionals, probably through PD. We do own Ms. Flores's books, so I did want to let you know that those are available for checkout at the library.
That's wonderful. And I wanted to point out that you have slavery in the Land of the Free, and that's one that's made us... He wrote especially for middle school kids. So I want to make sure that we have that.
We do.
And I'm working on... Maybe the Commission on the Status of Women will provide that book for all of our middle schools, and we'll see what happens. Thank you so much, Dr. Shaffer. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Is there any other comments? Or we go to the next? Mr. Kasakian, Councilmember Kasakian.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and colleagues. I'd like to just start off by thanking the American Red Cross, especially Norma Vega, who is their Chief Strategy and External Relations Officer, someone who I've had the pleasure of working with in the past in her various capacities. Now she's with the American Red Cross Los Angeles Region. Through her work and initiative, the City of Glendale recently received 27,000 face masks for children, along with 11,000 bottles of hand sanitizers for children as well, which through working with the city, we were able to provide to our Glendale Unified School District so they can provide these protective equipment, these personal protective equipment, or PPEs, to our youngest residents. So I want to thank the Red Cross and give them a shout out. And also, it seems as though there's been quite a bit of discussion, and continues to be, and rightfully so, about the topic that we discussed last week, and we passed a resolution on for standing up against hate that's targeting our AAPI community. And there is an event that's happening tomorrow evening right here in the city, a prayer vigil for racial acceptance. If I can ask staff to perhaps put up the slide. It is being hosted by our local Incarnation Catholic Church. It will take place tomorrow at 7:00 PM. It is an outdoors with a drive-in option. You can tune in on the radio channel to listen to the prayer vigil. And it will be attended by Archbishop Jose Gomez, Bishop Alex Aklon, Bishop Mark Trudeau, and Father Rodell of Incarnation Church. I believe he is the first Filipino parish priest, father of Incarnation or of any of our, I believe, Catholic churches in the Glendale or nearby area. And so this is an event that's open to everyone. I am going to try to attend this. And if anyone has any further information, they can contact the parish center at 818-242-2579. And of course, all COVID-19 safety protocols will apply. That is all.
Thank you. Is there any other comment?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Najarian.
Thank you. As you know, I'm chairman of MetroLink, which is the five-county Regional Railroad Association Commuter Rail. And today, MetroLink announced that it has unveiled a new climate action plan that charts a course towards a greener future for the agency. The plan, which is MetroLink's first formal environmentally-focused initiative, addresses climate change, air quality, and other pressing sustainability issues to help advance the regional railway's aggressive goal for zero emissions by 2028. While the plan sets a framework for improvements over the next decade, MetroLink is embarking on more immediate measures to reduce its carbon footprint. Currently, a pilot program is underway utilizing a single Tier 2 locomotive to test renewable plant-based diesel fuel, which is the latest, greenest alternative fuel on the market that is chemically similar to petroleum diesel, but 100% renewable and sustainable. MetroLink hopes to see a reduction in greenhouse gas and criteria pollutant emissions during the pilot period. If the Tier 2 pilot proves successful, testing will begin on a new Tier 4 locomotive. And if all goes well with the Tier 4 locomotive, then MetroLink can transition its entire fleet to the renewable diesel fuel. And that's my announcement. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Najarian. Mr. Brotman, do you have any comment?
Not coming from me this week.
No, thank you. Okay. Now, I would like to take any calls from the public as it relates to the community event announcement. We will be taking five callers. Each speaker will be given three minutes or close to three minutes. Please consider that you have three minutes to share your comment. Do we have a call?
Mayor, I do have one caller.
Okay, let's go to the caller.
Monica Campagna. Monica?
Hi, thank you very much. Hello, Mayor, good evening, councilmembers, city staff. I just wanted to... Hi, thank you very much. Hello, Mayor. Good evening, uh, council members, city staff. I just wanted to call in. I don't know if he's listening, but I wanted to congratulate our fire captain Ray Ortiz on his, um, very long 34-year career with the fire department and just thank him for all that he's done for the community. And, um, I also just want to say that if the city ever can have time to have a parade for our firefighters and our first responders, nurses, doctors, police, I think that would be really great. We'd, I'd certainly love to celebrate them all. So, that's all. Thank you so much. I'll be calling later on some other items, but that's all I wanted to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Is there any other caller?
Mayor, I do not have a caller on the line, but would you like to wait thirty, uh, wait 30 seconds for the lag period that we have?
Okay, anybody wants to call?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Kasakian.
One of the things I wanted to mention, I didn't know if staff was going to bring it up. Uh, I did ask, uh, I know our fire chief is unable to be with us today, but given that we have the Easter holiday, uh, right around the corner, and by the way, I wish all of our Jewish neighbors and friends, uh, happy Passover, as well as, um, those getting ready to celebrate Good Friday and, and obviously Palm Sunday last week and Easter coming up. I think there's a lot of people who want to get together, some people who feel emboldened by the fact that they've received the vaccines. And certainly, we're going in the right direction in terms of our, um, COVID infection rates. Um, they're, um, on the downswing, but we're seeing in other states, uh, a surge or the verge of a surge. Um, and I want, uh, someone from staff, if they have statements, I think maybe the fire chief may have provided, or, um, uh, I, I don't know if someone from the city manager's office can comment on it. Cautioning our, our public, giving us an update, we're on the right track. I saw the latest statistics, and people can see it on our website as well. Approximately 25% of our residents have received at least one vaccine shot. Um, but it's still, uh, we need to be careful. We need to protect ourselves. We need to continue wearing masks until we're all out of this together. So, um, does staff have something to present?
Mayor? Yes, Mr. Golanyan.
Mayor Agajanian, Member of City Council, Councilmember Kasakian, as you noted, Chief Lonzes is out of town on business. However, he did prepare a written statement that Mr. Takdalion is going to read, including the latest stats on vaccinations and, and progress that we have made in the city of Glendale, as well as, uh, some notes about gatherings and, uh, the, the health orders that are still in place regarding that. Mr. Takdalion?
Mr. Takdalion.
Good evening, Mayor Agajanian, members of council. Uh, Chief Lonzes did in fact provide a statement, and it reads as follows. First and foremost, I'd like to thank our community for doing a great job in helping to sharply reduce our positive cases throughout the city and helping to start the transition to some state of normalcy. As of March 28th, Glendale has had 19,463 COVID-19 positive cases and sadly, 583 untimely deaths. However, through the hard work of your fire department, the city, the Parks and Community Services Department, our local hospitals, and many other partners, we've been able to vaccinate 49,420 residents with at least a first dose of the vaccine. This figure represents roughly one in every four local residents who's been vaccinated thus far. With the increased eligibility of adults 50 years and older, starting April 1st, and everyone 16 years and older, starting April 15th, to be eligible for the vaccine, we hope to see these numbers drastically increase in the coming weeks. With these numbers in mind and the glimmer of hope we're seeing, it's important for everyone to remember that we're not out of the woods yet. As we approach spring break and numerous holidays, it's important to remember that traveling gathering in person with others increases the risk of getting, uh, getting and spreading COVID-19. While COVID-19 numbers have decreased, transmission remains widespread as, and is increasing in many other states and countries. The safest way to observe the holidays at this time is still to gather either virtually or with people who you live with. If you decide to gather in person, please do so with no more than three households and do so outside with facial coverings on. Please celebrate responsibly and continue to work together to help us continue on the path to recovery. That was Chief Lonzes's statement.
Thank you, Mr. Takdalion, and thank you, Chief Lonzes, wherever he is. Okay, Mr. Golanyan, is there anything else? Thank you. Okay. Uh, next item, please. Nobody else called yet?
Mayor, for community event announcement, announcement, three-minute portion, I have no callers. I do have two callers waiting for 7-8.
For seven, okay.
Would you like me to read it?
Okay, what's next, please, then?
Seven, uh, would be adoption of ordinance. 7-8, community development regarding an urgency ordinance of the council of the city of Glendale, amending Title V of the Glendale Municipal Code 1995 to add chapter 5 dot 112 relating to hazard pay requirements for employees working frontline positions in grocery retail and drug retail establishments in the city of Glendale, California during the COVID-19 pandemic. And this was brought in by, uh, Councilmember Devine on March 23rd, 2021.
Thank you. Mr. Golanyan?
Yes, Mayor Agajanian, Member of City Council, as it was read into the record, the ordinance that was introduced last week, I'm here.
Is your microphone on?
Sorry. I'm sorry.
Okay, let's do it again.
Okay. As it was read into the record, Mayor Agajanian, Member of City Council, this is a request for adoption of ordinance that was introduced by Councilmember Devine on the subject of hero pay hazard pay requirements, uh, for employees working frontline positions. Uh, and we're here for the adoption.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Garcia, do you have anything to add? No. Okay. Is there any comments, Mr. Councilmember Najarian? Your microphone?
When we were speaking about potential, uh, liability of the city, uh, last month, I was a little bit concerned. I, I do want to say, though, that I've received the legal brief by the attorneys representing the city of Long Beach in their action. That's the case that went to the federal court. And I am, uh, fairly confident that, uh, the case, uh, of the Grocers Association against Long Beach does not have any merit. And therefore, the same would apply to the city of Glendale if this is actually voted on and enacted tonight. So, I'm, I'm resting easier that the liability exposure to the city is, uh, of course, you can never say zero, but, but very, uh, uh, remote. So, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Garcia.
You have callers on this item, I think, correct?
Yes, correct.
Okay, let's go to the callers then.
Mike Mohill, you're live. Mike, go ahead.
Good evening, councilmembers. My name is Mike Mohill. Good evening, councilmembers. Mike Mohill here. Uh, Mr. Najarian, I'm glad you brought up the lawsuit. I was gonna bring that up too. But you know, Mr. Najarian, there's no guarantee that cities would lose. It'll have to go to the appeal court and so forth and so on. That's number one. Since you're gonna be giving heroes pay to different people, these are union employees. That's why you're giving it to them, because unions have influence in our city and our government. You know, when you go to your garage mechanic to fix your car, he doesn't belong to a union, does he? Or the computer guy you go to fix your computer, or the gardener who comes and mows your lawn. These people don't belong to unions. The, uh, Retail Clerks Union is very powerful in the city, county, and state, 'cause they give campaign money to politicians like our five council members. Now, I'm not saying you people, you individuals have in this particular case, but unions have great influence. Why not the little guy? Again, you know, when you have to fix your computer, you're gonna go to, uh, let's see. Uh, let's go to Ralph's Market or CB Pharmacy. Okay? They don't belong, they do, it's foolish. And again, again, in the city of Glendale, probably CB Pharmacy, Ralph's Market, and Von's Market will be shut down, probably, because they don't have, they can't afford to increase the, the labor cost. There's nothing wrong with people volunteering to give more money to their employees. But to force an employer, what is this, communism? This is communism. Communists do this, and unfortunately, this city, county, state, and federal government is going communistic by the actions that are being taken today and, and yesterday, today, and it seems like tomorrow also. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mohill. Next caller, please.
Eden Solis. Eden?
Yes.
You're live. Go ahead.
Okay. Hi there, uh, councilmembers. My name is Eden Denisso. I live in Glendale and I work in the CVS Pharmacy at Montrose as a certified pharmacy technician. Uh, please excuse any informality I may use. This is my first time speaking to a city council. Uh, I understand this is a big decision for the city council to help the essential workers who are mostly left alone during the pandemic. To be honest, I'm not sure why this is being discussed, as this should be passed with no question. I know that this hero pay is already passed in certain parts of LA County. Whoever is working in a grocery store or pharmacy is putting their life and possibly their loved ones at risk, underlying conditions or not. The amount of selfish people that have come to the pharmacy knowing full well they have COVID just to pick up their medication is sickening. Despite the protections in place, I know seven people in my store alone who contracted COVID. Essential workers don't, just don't need praise. They need your help. This is your chance to prove to the central workers that this city's council will always be of help. When this passes, I hope other cities in the county follow suit and properly aid the essential workers who have been through a lot through the pandemic. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Next caller.
Janet Rosales, you're live. Janet, go ahead.
Hi, my name is Janet Rosales, and I work for the Vons located at 561 North Glendale Avenue. I've been working at that Vons for about 20 years, and, um, I just want to say that if there are people that don't think that we deserve those $5 extra, I, you, you have no idea what we have gone through working at a place like a Vons. It's been crazy. It's been, it's just been dangerous. We have to deal with people that don't want to wear masks. We feel like it's not just getting us sick, but it's bringing that sickness home. Let's say I'm asymptomatic, and I don't have, I don't get anything, but if I bring it home and I get my kids sick and one of them dies. I already have an uncle that passed away from the disease, a healthy person that had no medical conditions, and this virus killed him. So, for me and for my coworkers to show up to work every day on time and having to work extra because the demanding was crazy during the, the worst time of the pandemic, and to think that we don't deserve those $5, and our companies are making millions of dollars in profit, and to think we don't deserve this, it's, it's really crazy to believe people think that we don't deserve it, when we are risking our lives going to work, especially, like I said, with people that sometimes don't even want to wear masks. And they don't understand. I don't think anybody understands unless they work there with me. And that's all I wanted to say. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next caller, please.
Seth Chazanoff. Seth, you're live.
Thank you. Councilmembers, I have lived in Glendale now for 42 years. Um, I have the great luxury due to what my job is to work from home, uh, most of the time. The restaurant, I'm sorry, the, uh, the grocery store workers and pharmacy workers do not have that option. They have to come in. It doesn't matter how, how afraid they may be of, uh, of the circumstances. I am strongly in favor of, uh, passage of this motion. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next caller.
Louis Reyes, you're live. Louis, go ahead.
Mr. Reyes? Louis? Is there any other caller?
Yes, Mayor, there's about five more. I can put them on hold and come back to.
Yeah, let's go to the next caller. We'll come back and listen to Mr. Louis.
Joshua Cardoza. Joshua, you're live.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Joshua Cardoza, and I'm a new manager at the Glendale Route. I've been there for roughly two years. The influx of customers have exposed us greatly to the, to the virus. I, for one, was exposed at the end of November. I brought it home to my family and had to spend 10 days in the hospital. My child had to spend eight hours, and during the, for those eight hours that he spent, we had to pay $500 after my insurance covered it. I'm now afraid of my hospital bill. Those $5 would greatly help. Um, it's very difficult what we've gone through this entire year. All the customers that we have to deal with day in and day out, it hasn't stopped. I would urge you to pass this. It's long overdue. It shouldn't be up for discussion. Thank you.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Cardoza. Next caller.
John Wells, you're live. John, go ahead.
Yes, thank you for taking my call. Um, as we all know, this has been a, a very trying year, and especially in the very beginning, the grocery workers were there on the front lines, but we didn't know what was going on. We're all scared to death of the virus. I commend them for their bravery and the frontline workers. Uh, I am against this, though, and I am against the $15 minimum wage. It's nothing against those people, but what's gonna happen when you start increasing wages all across the board? Everything is gonna go up in price, and the $15 they're promising you are the hazard pay. You won't be, a loaf of bread's gonna cost you 10 bucks by the time they get done with this. It's gonna destroy our economy even further. And as far as essential workers, I'm a contractor. My, my customers have been put out of business. They can't afford their mortgages anymore. Everybody's job is essential, and I, I'm really tired of hearing about how all the unions and big box stores, you can go in there and somehow the virus doesn't know that, you know, that's no problem, but the little mom and pop shop, you're gonna put them out of business? You're gonna bankrupt everybody? Um, you know, this is the wrong direction to go in. It's not against those people. God bless them, but I was out there working the whole time also, putting my life on the line as far as what we knew at the time. Um, I, again, I'm against this. It's not gonna help us in the long run. You're only gonna bankrupt people. They're gonna close more food stores. You're gonna start creating food shortages, which I think some of the people that are pushing this really might be behind. Thank you very much. Bye-bye.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes. Next caller.
Linda Parrott, you're live. Linda, go ahead.
Hi, my name is, my name is Linda Parrott. Um, I've worked for Vons for 42 years. I work on this store on Glendale Avenue in Glendale, on Vons. And, um, I just want to say, for all the people that don't think we deserve it, we do deserve it. And, um, the stores that in the news, they say they're closing, the Ralphs and Long Beach, the two stores, they were gonna close them anyway, just so you know that. And then now the Ralphs is just using that as an excuse. But we've been there the whole time. I'm scared to death to take this, um, the COVID-19 home to my family, and I think we strongly deserve it. And thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next caller.
Cheryl Green, you're live. Cheryl, go ahead.
Yes. Uh, hello to the city council. I, hi, I work in, uh, Glendale, 311 Los Feliz, and, um, I'm a baker, and I, um, I, I do over and beyond my job duty every day, not mandatory, but by choice, for my safety and others, for everybody that come into the store, for everybody that's in that area, whether they work there or not, when they come into the store, I, I go out my way to disinfect. We, um, in that particular area, we have homeless that comes in, you know? A lot of times, they don't have money to pay. A lot of times, they use our restroom. I don't know how they got the COVID, but they come in. I'm a worker. I'm a baker, but I go out my way and I'll go ahead and get the bleach and go clean the restroom, even though that's not my job description. I'll go out my way and do certain things to keep the store safe, because at the end of the day, the people in that community, and I don't even live in Glendale, but I work there. But the people in that community, they come there, they eat, their families eat, and everything that must be sanitized and not cross, but, you know, not cross contamination. That's how people get sick. I go on my way to, I don't wait till somebody tells me to do that. I go on my way to do that by myself, for the sake of that community that I don't even live in, I was working. They don't pay me extra for that. So, I think it's very selfish for, you know, anybody to vote or say or make a decision that we don't deserve $5 or sit in a, uh, raid to our pay. And I'm not the only one that go over and beyond for our students, for our community. And I'm not the only one that go over and beyond for our students, for our community to keep COVID-19 down. We disinfect on a daily, our baskets and everything. We go, a lot of this is not in our job duty and they cutting our hours. So I'm doing all that plus making sure the bakery bread is baked. So when anybody in that community come in that store can have fresh bread and, and fresh cookies and everything. Outside of me doing other stuff for the store to keep down COVID-19, there's no raise on my pay, cut hours, no raise. So I mean, $5 would really help. I, I, I take care of an 83-year-old, you know, woman. She's my grandmother. I take care of her. But I mean, I'm, I'm dealing with, you know, the public every day. I'm putting her at risk. I'm putting myself at risk. I'm putting my 12-year-old at risk because I'm not selfish. So it would really help that whoever has the power to make these decisions, so letting us, you know, go ahead and have $5 and our, we are essential workers too. We're human too. We're sacrificing not just for ourselves, but for the community and for the world because once somebody gets COVID, it could easily be spread, you know? So I think it's only fair, it's only justice that we get to ask them to find out our essential pay. I mean, it's only justice. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Green. Thank you. Next caller, please.
Jacqueline Rodan. Jacqueline?
Hello?
Yes. Yes, we are listening.
Hello, yes, good evening, city council. My name is Jacqueline Rodan. I've been working with Vons for three months now, and all I would like to say is that I think Glendale County deserves a $5 raise to hazard pay because everybody, everybody's essential workers and everybody's putting their life at risk with the COVID pandemic going on since it started. And everybody puts the hard work and effort into working every day, coming to work every day they're scheduled to be there. And me, as a pregnant woman, I think $14 an hour of minimum wage is not enough to provide me and for my coming baby. And I think with the hazard pay, I think it would help a lot if, if everybody deserves, everybody deserves it. But I just think it's not fair how other counties are getting $5 raise, but honestly, just by sitting down at their houses with unemployment and still getting a $5 raise, I just think it's not fair to others who are actually putting hard working effort and coming to work and risking their own lives and the children at home and parents and grandparents and all the family in general. That, that's, that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Jacqueline. Next caller, please.
Angelo Roscoe. Angelo, you're live. Go ahead. Angelo Roscoe, can you hear me? Angelo? Mayor, I can put him on hold and move on to the next caller.
Okay, let's go to the next one.
Eden Solis, you're live. Eden, go ahead.
All right, hello, my name is Eden Solis. I work in the CVS Pharmacy in Montrose and also a resident in Montrose. During this pandemic, we all have been here since the very beginning and all essential workers, we've been very good with helping out the community and our customers. And I believe we deserve that $5 pay and even more because sometimes there were times where some of us weren't able to come into work because they were, they were exposed to COVID and we all had, most of us have to come to work and work more than we should have, and that wasn't fair for all of us because when we come back home, we had to risk to bring the virus with us to our families. And the $5 shouldn't be a problem because it's only a temporary thing and I believe we deserve this. And not just the Los Angeles, but also the Glendale community as well. And I believe that as a community, I believe it's time to help each other and if anything goes wrong, I'm pretty sure we will all lift ourselves together again. That'll be all. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Solis. Next caller.
Mayor, we're going back to Louis Reyes. Louis, can you hear me?
Louis Reyes?
Louis, can you hear us?
Louis Reyes? Can you hear us? How about we go to the next one, which we lost, that's it.
Angelo Roscoe. Angelo, you're live. Go ahead, Angelo. Angelo Roscoe? Angelo Roscoe, you're live, Angelo.
Do you have any other caller?
Mayor, those were the only two callers and that's it.
So.
I have Mr. Louis Reyes and Angelo Roscoe. I've attempted to get a hold of them twice and it's not working.
Okay, we call again.
Do you want us to wait about 30 seconds?
Louis Reyes and Angelo Roscoe.
Correct.
If they can hear us, please call up or please speak so this way we can hear you. Otherwise, I guess we waited long, so we'll pass.
Okay.
All right, thank you. All right, is there any? Yes, Ms. Devon.
Mayor, I'd like to move the urgency temporary ordinance.
Thank you. Is there, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, Mr. Brotman is seconded, seconded this item seven, I guess, A. Okay, roll call, please.
Councilmember Brotman?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Kasakian?
On the evening before the anniversary of Cesar Chavez's birthday, I will cast a very appropriate yes vote for this. Thank you.
Najarian?
I'm just going to say yes.
And Mayor Agajanian?
Yes. Next item, please.
All right.
Next item would be innovation performance and audit regarding an ordinance of the council of the city of Glendale, California, amending section 2.04, dot 020 of the Glendale Municipal Code 1995 relating to mayoral selection process. This was brought up by councilmember Kasakian on March 23, 2021.
Okay, Mr. Golanyan or Mr. Garcia? Whichever.
Mayor Agajanian, member of city council. As it was read into the record by our city clerk, this item was introduced by councilmember Kasakian last week, and here we are today for your consideration of the adoption. I'm not sure if you have any callers, Mr. Jamian.
Yes, mayor, I do. Yes, mayor Agajanian, I do have a caller, just one at this point.
Okay, let's go to the caller.
Ted Flanagan, you're live. Ted?
Yeah. Hello?
Yes, Mr. Flanagan, we are listening.
Mr. Flanagan, are you calling for item?
Yes, mayor.
7B or 8A, Mr. Flanagan?
8A there.
Okay, I'll put you back on hold, Mr. Flanagan.
Thank you, sir.
Mike Mohill? You're live. Go ahead.
Good evening, councilmembers. Mike Mohill. I think the time has come for the city of Glendale to stop this ceremonial process of who should be our mayor. We should have the mayor to be elected by all the people of Glendale. This person should have power to direct the city, be, be the spokesperson for the city for four years. And at the same time, we should have council districts. It all ties in together, and we should also have a city attorney elected by the people. We need to change our government. It's not working. We don't have a representative government. We have, we are represented only by the union influence, union influence developers and real estate, not the people. The people need to say we want to elect our mayor, we want to have council districts, and we want to elect a city attorney who represents the people of Glendale and not the city council. I hope this is, this council can do something in that direction. Councilmen Kasakian and Brotman, you're both new to the process. I hope you make a difference by saying no more to the status quo. We need to have an elected, again, mayor, council districts, anywhere between five, seven, or nine, whatever the people want, and a elected city attorney who represents the people of Glendale and not the city council. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Mohill. Next caller.
Mayor, I have no more callers for item 7B.
Okay. Is there any comment on this? Ms., Councilmember Kasakian?
And Mr. Mayor, thank you. I, I think that, you know, this is the best process we're going to have right now. I think it's the most equitable one, and I think it's going to take some of the unpredictability out of the process that we've seen in previous years out of the selection of the mayor. It will make it, I think, as I said, as fair as it can be. Now, as far as the other issues that were raised by the callers, I think there will be a time to address all of those, but for the time being, I think this will work well. And with that, I would like to make the motion for adoption.
Is there any other comment?
I'll second the motion.
Okay, is there any other comment? Anybody has any comment? Okay, I have a comment myself. As I said last week, I don't think this is the solution. It worked before because Mr. David Weaver, for a long time, has not been considered. There's five years and four, I mean, four years and five people. So it's always there will be a problem. As I said, it worked in recent years because David Weaver was out, they would not, he would not be elected, nobody wanted to vote for him. And then we came to, I guess it was 2016? Yes, 2016, and Mrs. Friedman was not elected or not selected as a mayor. So therefore, there was no problem so far. And then we came to a situation that instead of four years, we had five years. But however, I know those who would come at a later time, they're going to have problems. So I just wanted to be mentioning it. So with that, roll call, please.
Councilmember Brotman?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Kasakian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
And Mayor Agajanian?
Yes. Next caller, next item, please.
Mayor, next item is eight action items, 8A Glendale Water and Power Regarding 100% Clean Energy by 2030. Study motion to note and file. Motion to note and file 100% Clean Energy by 2030.
Thank you, Mr. Golanyan.
Yes, Mayor Agajanian, member of city council. We are excited to bring this item forward in response to councilmember Devine's request, and it's going to highlight efforts, our staff's effort on a long but fruitful path to 100% clean energy. Going to turn it over to Mark Young, our Assistant General Manager of GWP for an introduction, and then he's going to introduce the consultant who has done some modeling work and is going to present this comprehensive presentation, Ascend Analytics. With that, Mr. Young?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Like Mr. Golanyan said, my name is Mark Young. I'm the Assistant General Manager of Power Management, GWP. During the city council meeting on July 23, 2019, a motion was passed requiring GWP to develop a plan for goals or methods to achieve 100% clean energy by 2030. And today, we're proud to present our findings to you. GWP has engaged with Ascend Analytics to assist us with this report, and tonight we have Dr. Gary Doras, CEO and co-founder of Ascend, here to present the findings. Mr. Dr. Doras?
Thank you very much for that introduction. It's good to be back in front of the council. I'll be sharing my screen right now, so hopefully that'll work in just a second It was just almost two years ago, July 15 of 2019, I was before the council last. Obviously, a lot's happened since then. We've continued to move on with assessing how Glendale can realize reliability in 100% clean energy. And this presentation, I think, is drawn from its 100% clean energy plan, which we've developed, and it's an honor to be here and present these results. I'd say my company and I do a lot of work in this area, and this plan is very far ahead of the curve, very forward-thinking, and something that the city should be proud of because it stands apart from everything I've seen and done in terms of its ambition and realization of goals. And frankly, it's openness and transparency. So I'm going to talk about the key findings. I'll skim over analytic methods, recognizing that that's for a more narrow audience, and then move towards including on the path to 100% clean and where we are and how does this fit in a relative sense. And again, I think we're looking at things through the appropriate and rational lens of trying to steward capital resources in a way that's going to maximize the benefit for the community and maintaining reliability. So Glendale has contracted with Ascend to perform a feasibility study analyzing the conversion to clean energy by 2030. Ascend found that Glendale could reach 89% clean energy by 2030 under the acquisition of significant amount of additional clean energy resources and continuing to move forward with the plans of repowering Grayson and following the plan there. As you recall, it was battery storage, some ICEs, and local generation and importing as much as the lines could carry. Glendale is in a unique position being an urban area. It doesn't have a lot of land to play with to build out its own resources and has to rely and be dependent on external transmission to realize its clean energy needs. I'm going to skip this and just get right to the key findings. The numbers I'll be presenting are slightly different in terms of costs, just costs, for, relative to the report that's been published. They're lower, and that's based on updated cost information Ascend has from its recent RFO, RFPs that we've run for several entities in California. This is a good thing. We want to be with the latest market data and have the insights and provide you with the, let's say, most up-to-date information, and we've done that. So excuse the small discrepancies in costs coming down, maybe 5% on average, but I think it's worth it just to give you the perspective that's more current. And we'll be updating the resource plan document shortly following this meeting. So we're looking at a position right now where, let me explain this graph to you. The black line is retail load. The gray line is thermal energy marching through time and which consists largely of magnolia and IPP. As you'll see shortly, the ICEs are inconsequential in terms of thermal generation production. They're there for backup and reliability purposes. We're under the assumption right now, in the planning, in terms of emissions, we've been conservative and have not assumed renewable fuels, although that's certainly something that in the future holds the potential to change, make this gray as green as the renewables. As, as we go forward through time, you can see by 2030, it says we're clean energy in excess of load by 21%. Well, you just said they can only realize 89% of the load. How is this 21% in excess? We're 21% in excess of the average annual load, and I'll show this in a minute, but on an hourly net load basis, you're actually short 11%. By most metrics, like what Amazon and Microsoft are doing today, you're 20% long, you're 120% clean by those metrics. By this more rigorous standard, you're at 89%. So on an hour-by-hour basis, you're within 11%. On an annual basis, you're 20% long. That's a good position to be in. I don't know anybody who's 21% long and calls themselves 11% short, but we're doing that here. And I applaud this as being really forthright, and we're looking at these goals and metrics and not trying to put spin on them and trying to be as conservative as possible to do our part, and that stands apart. Well done. If we look at the composition of GWP in terms of percent renewables serving load through time, it's shown here in the blue, and we keep progressing from 60% in 2022 to 89% in 2030. There is this excess of clean energy that's sold and some that is economically curtailed. I'd say in terms of economic curtailments, as you'll see shortly, Glendale is picking the right resources to meet load relative to the region. In fact, if we look at this on an hourly basis, it looks different than any other entity I've ever seen in the WEC in a very positive way. WEC is the Western Electricity Coordinating Council, so basically Colorado, California. So every entity in California typically, this area, the green means you're long. So this is hours 1 through 24, and these are the 12 months of the year. So you're long generally when the sun's down, you're short when the sun's up. That's a bit by design. Obviously, we're looking at wind geothermal and batteries to help provide the more valuable nighttime energy. The system itself, the WEC, California, it's long when the sun's up. Glendale's taking advantage, appropriately so, of its economic position with resources that can cover the sundown areas economically. And so we're looking at a little bit of shortage when the sun's up and a bit long when the sun's down. That's very unique. The value of energy when the sun is up and near its zenith angle is relatively small. We're surplus in the region on average, and that means adding more to this regional surplus. And everybody's putting solar. Very few people can take advantage of geothermal and wind and nuclear. They just don't have the ability to import the energy properly. There isn't the locations. That's unusual. It's a good thing to be in this spot and I think positions Glendale and its customers well. If we look at the carbon emissions and how they fall, they're down 75% from 1990 levels and 50% over the next nine years. I don't know if I've gotten to this yet, but costs are slightly above inflation, about 2.5% per year. So it's roughly a 5% increase over inflation over the 90-year horizon till 2030. Assuming inflation's at 2%. Given the ambitions and what's being realized here, that's impressive. And this is a plan that's, I'd say, built a little conservatively. There's even room, possibly, that these numbers could be lower. So you're well above any goals that the state has set for targets in terms of meeting emissions reductions. You're charging a pathway for setting clean around-the-clock energy. We work with a lot of CCAs, and they have a lot of ambition in this direction. I think to lay out a plan and realize this as a municipality with the clean sundown, I haven't seen anything like it, and it really does stand apart. That clean sundown is truly impressive, and the ability to do that is very distinct. And I think positions Glendale very well for the future. So you're in a good spot with respect as a whole, and the costs are quite in line if you compare this to other plans in the state and elsewhere to realize 100% clean or close to that. It's done economically and rationally. NOx emissions, NOx is a precursor to troposphereic ozone, urban smog. They also fall by 50% over the next nine years, nearly five tons. Five tons in the LA basin is relatively small, given there are about 1,600 tons of NOx emissions per year from vehicles alone. This is a decline over what we projected in the 2019 plan, and the decline occurs principally after 2023 when GWP relies less on the Grayson 9 unit for energy. And you can see that here, where Grayson 9 dissipates in its production and thus emissions. And the ICE units are just here as both in NOx and in general in production as firming capacity, that they're just there for reliability purposes. When we're looking at planning, we want to look at reliability. We need to look at how we're going to get there. And we're charting a course here that's a bit of a tightrope walk. And we do this with a bit of, I think, we're working with Glendale and their team on how to realize this, and it's with a little bit of trepidation. You know, we are publishing these numbers of the potential loss of load hours, but Grayson 1 through 8 are going to retire in 2022. When we look at the loss of load hours, they're going to exceed, or Glendale is beginning to be positioned to exceed those loss of load hours for, of 2.4 per year by a fair amount through 2024. But then when they are rice units, the internal combustion engines come on, 93 megawatts, the reliability will be back to 2.4 hours per year. And that's, that's just where we want the system to be. So we have the max, obviously, is when Graysons 1 through 8 retire, then the 50-megawatt battery comes on, and some solar plus storage, then the rice units. So there's a little bit of a tightrope here for the next several years, but there are purchases in place, and I think Glendale will be able to sustain a reliable system or maintain the system over that short window of time and make this transition. It's a small harrowing journey, given what you're trying to accomplish, and well worth it. If we look at the simulation results, and we just picked September 1st through 7th, 2030, just wanted to give you an idea over this week, what happened, how the system runs, and what's the importance of each unit. And in normal operations, Grayson 9, it's relatively inefficient and isn't needed. It doesn't run. The rice units, there's 14-megawatt hours, that's basically nothing. And then magnolia is at 16,000-megawatt hours. We have an N minus one. We lose one of the transmission lines. So there are two big transmission lines of 100-megawatt seats. There's the Pacific DC tie and the Southwest Transmission Line, STS. If we lose any one of those, which is here, in this case, we looked at the loss of the Pacific tie, we're losing, this increases generation of Grayson, the rice units, and magnolia a little bit. The rice units kick in and keep the lights on, and they're required. And if we lose both lines, excuse me, lose one of the lines and 50% of the Southwest line, then everything's on and contributing quite a bit, and you're honestly struggling to keep the lights on, but you're doing it. And that's the point of having local generation. You're going to need it, you have a vulnerable system, and that's why you have the local backup. And I think I preempted myself earlier on the costs, but it's impressive that the bills will increase 22% over the nine years. That's fine, there's inflation, it's 2.5% per year versus 2% annually for inflation or roughly a 5% increase beyond inflation. When we look at this investment and the reduction in carbon, we're realizing carbon at about $320 per metric ton. I think that's a number to keep your eye on. $320 per ton for carbon is not unreasonable. It's not inconsistent with other types of investments in transportation infrastructure and other initiatives. I mean, it's certainly not inexpensive by any means. But for clean power supply and relative to other investments, as we'll show later, this is fair. It is a reasonable stewarding of capital to improve the electric supply to be clean. We do think the cost of renewables could become more competitive, and that will help. This is just estimates, conservative today. When we get in the heat of the competition of an RFP, prices could come down. We do recognize that getting 100% clean will be substantially more expensive, and that last 11% is something that we're hoping to accomplish as economically as we've been able to accomplish up to 89%. And again, by many metrics, well over 100%. And this 89% is extremely rigorous metric that we're adhering to. So the resources that we're adding to the model and how they add to costs, we're looking at wind at $55 a megawatt hour, solar at 30, geothermal at 65, and batteries at $7 a kilowatt month. And this is assuming in-state wind. There's the ability for wind to be imported across some of the lines at lower values. We know that, same with solar. And obviously, batteries are continuing to come down in costs. So this is a relatively conservative estimate. What we're seeing, though, is the cost in millions, we're at 89 million is the baseline. We lose 21 million from existing resources and planned resources, add up the 41, add up continuously, going from 89 million to 2030 of 137 million. So again, I'd say over that 137 million, you're seeing 46 million in hypothetical costs. That 46 million is hypothetical. It could be 35 million. It's done a little conservatively is our point. There is these market sales of 19 million, and I want to note that because the market sales are effectively because you're long, you're producing excess clean energy. It's only on this hourly metric that you're a little bit short by 11%. I mentioned the marginal cost of abatement of carbon at $320 a ton, and I wanted to provide a reference for you as to other investments and projected costs, what it costs to carbon. They're in a similar range. Yes, I suppose do forestry offsets at great savings at $55 a ton, but there is a requirement and a demand to have clean energy supply. How does that fare relative to the transportation sector in stewarding your capital there? And it looks like it's on par. Vehicle subsidies around $220 a ton, buses at 320, and charging infrastructure about the same. So you're right in the mix, and that's just where you want to be. You're at the marginal cost of other resource options, and that's a solid stewarding of capital. And that's what we're outlining for the plan. Obviously, on a go-forward basis, it might even become a little more cost-effective. This is where we're going to pick up a little bit of time in the presentation. I'm not going to go through the modeling. It's bad enough you have to sit through these results, I understand that. It's a very unique area, and I appreciate that you've challenged yourself in this way. I love this and do it for a living. I don't expect everybody else to. Ascend used this powersome model. It's actually developed by Ascend as well. It's widely used in the industry, and we've done this for Hawaii and a host of others towards determining the pathway towards 100% clean. And our primary objective was to maximize the clean energy around the clock. And again, we're not looking at this on an annual basis. Annual basis, we took the clean energy well over 100%, but on the stricter hourly criteria, you're a little bit short, and that's something to be looked at on the road with more information. So we simulated the system in terms of adding resources to, again, realize a clean carbon goal and minimize costs and maintain reliability. Our simulation engine for Glendale and the broader regional market for power starts with simulating weather and then looking at that as a function to drive solar and wind and load and market prices. And this is the overall powersome framework. I'm not going to get into all the details, but we're looking at every facet out there and not looking at it in a single deterministic view, but in a broad set of views that will provide a set of outcomes that looks at the least cost over all possible future states, not a normalized weather state or a high or low state. It's a probability function of 100 future states simulated on an hourly basis into the future. And that's different because it enables us to look at costs and reliability and risk over a broad spectrum of meteorologies. Like, for example, last summer, where it was hot days on end. If it wasn't for COVID, it could have been a lot more severe, as well as the fact that most of the peak landed on a weekend. In terms of the Glendale system, we have the schematic, which many of you have seen before when I showed this to you last time, but I want to just frame in your mind. We have the 100-megawatt DC Pacific tie, this 100-megawatt Southwest AC intertie, peak load in Glendale, about 344 megawatts. So that's 200 megawatts in the ties. We can get maybe 68 megawatts from demand response and local production as well as storage. And then we have magnolia and Grayson 9 and the rice units. And it makes the system a little bit vulnerable if we lose any one of these ties. And that's what we're designing this system to, is N minus one, we lose the tie, and we lose Grayson. And that's how we came up with the rice units and their mix, being in the mix, and they're a perfect type of resource for Glendale. They have the ability to serve under extended periods, like we saw in the polar vortex in Texas. Batteries don't last that long. You're going to need something that has the ability to withstand longer, more extreme periods. And the cost of longer-duration batteries today steers you right back in the direction of doing the ICEs. We looked at other units last, and look at the ICEs, and they're economically rational. If you try to do everything with storage, you end up with something like $2,300 a ton for carbon, and that's not a good stewardship of capital. There's a little bit of gas that's must-run, that doesn't help with the emissions. There's IPP, which is There's IPP, which is coal. That's to be converted natural gas in Utah, the Magnolia plant in Burbank running natural gas. Both those plants could, down the road, burn some clean fuels like hydrogen. And that's something they're inherently capable of as they're both combustion turbines. So there's the ability for both these plants to significantly become cleaner with less carbon. We did credit the clean energy serving the load to the maximum extent possible. We looked at, you know, what was known on the books and then beyond that in terms of generic wind and solar resources. And I think you can see, starting here in twenty twenty-six, we're looking at generic geothermal and wind resources. This is the hypothetical projects because they have two asterisks and they're all hypothetical. So that's what we call a generic resource. And those are the resources. I laid out the prices, particularly the wind might have the potential and in the solar to come down through time as well as perhaps the batteries. We also looked at the expected load and then a more severe ninety-fifth percentile load and reliability under both conditions. So the path to one hundred percent clean involves taking advantage of technological developments and economic opportunities that we can realize today that make sense. And that's what Glendale's done with a very competitive process that was run and our contracting for resources today that make economic sense. And I mean, I like what they're doing. I haven't seen anybody who's in a position to cover so much sundown energy with clean. And that's economically quite rational, given the price of energy when the sun is up. There's chances, as I mentioned earlier, for renewable natural gas or green hydrogen and perhaps long-duration storage. All of these we would consider on the frontiers of technology that are evolving quite rapidly, but aren't here today and other than renewable natural gas from landfills. But in terms of synthetic renewable natural gas produced from clean renewable energy, that's something to come. So in conclusion, we found that GWP can realistically serve eighty-nine percent of its load under the stringent criteria. Overall, producing in excessive a hundred percent, well, excessive a hundred percent of its load is clean energy on an annual basis. On an hourly basis, again, it's eighty-nine percent net hourly basis. The carbon's emissions would fall seventy-five percent from nineteen ninety levels. The Rice units are absolutely necessary to maintain reliability and support the system during extreme contingencies. As I mentioned, they're there for backup. The technological progress is happening. And I think these advances are something that we can't overlook as we look towards a hundred percent green and becoming more cost-effective. And I think they hold a lot of promise. And Glendale is making the right steps today to address cleaning the grid and doing something that's economically rational and I'm very proud to be part of this plan as a result. Finally, the next steps, we'll continue to revisit this topic periodically, looking at the technology and its advances. And GWP will include a hundred percent clean energy scenario as part of its resource plan as well. And then now I'll open it up for questions.
Thank you, Dr. Doris. Thank you very much for the information. Is there any question from Mr. Dr. Doris?
Yes, I have some questions.
Mr. Broughton, Councilmember Broughton.
Hi, Gary. Thanks for the presentation. I'm on this side of the table this time. I was behind you last time. Anyway, I have a few things. So first of all, your comment on the Rice engines, you say they're absolutely necessary. But I know we're looking at an alternative, which is alternative eight. I think the jury's still out on that. We haven't yet seen how that's going to pan out. But when you say they're absolutely necessary, are you saying you're ruling out alternative eight?
They don't rule out anything. That's not my job, as you know.
But you're saying you're making a strong statement that they're absolutely necessary. Yet we are evaluating an alternative that would replace them. So I would I would I would challenge that statement. It's a strong statement.
Commissioner Broughton, this is Mark Young. I think I have a better position to answer that question. I think Mr. Dr. Doris was referring to the ninety-three megawatts of thermal output. And alternative eight is going to have approximately the same amount of thermal output. The flexibility of the units are slightly different, but the max capacity is going to be very similar to the Rice engines. I believe that the Rice engines have more flexibility based on the fact that they're smaller incrementally. But it's still the same amount of thermal local generation.
Okay, yeah, I just, I get sensitive when I hear very definitive statements and I just, you know, kind of want to want to kind of bring that down to ground a little bit because, you know.
Well, let's just couch that a little more thoroughly if we could, please, then. The reliability and the economics, they appear to be the least cost resource and necessary in terms of reliability. And, you know, I've exposed that time and again in my analysis.
Yeah. So the other thing is, I'm sure you're familiar with the recent LA one hundred study. So I know there are a lot of differences between what we did and what they did. And I know, for instance, they're making assumptions about things like green hydrogen and other technologies that are not in the bag, so to speak. So we're certainly a lot more conservative coming in than they are on that front. On the other hand, what they've done is they're measuring total energy generated to meet load, whereas we're only measuring energy to meet retail sales. So we're like, for instance, and I'm just saying this, I know you understand it, I just want to make sure people listening understand. Like, if we were a hundred percent clean energy under the approach that's being presented today, we would still be generating, I don't know how much dirty energy because there are, you know, line losses. There are losses in the process of getting that energy from where it's generated to the household, right? Why, why are we taking the approach we're taking? And how much of an impact would it would it make if we were to take the LA approach, which I think is a more comprehensive and I don't mean this in a negative way, but it's a more honest approach. It's looking at the total energy that's being produced to meet Glendale's needs, even though some of that is never reaching a household, is never getting sold to a customer.
Right. So I think analytically, this boils down to what do you look at in terms of losses and how do you attribute losses? We're certainly looking at losses. I think it's six point three percent line losses. We're accounting for that in terms of serving load.
What do you, you're counting for six point three? In what, in what sense? It's, are you, when you're looking at a percentage like that eighty-nine percent number, does that, is that eighty-nine percent of the total energy generated, including what's lost? Or is that net of what's lost?
That includes the losses, I believe. It has to.
Are you sure about that? Because I didn't think, I didn't pick that up from the report and it's not, you know, it's not the way most utilities, I think, today are interpreting renewable portfolio standard requirement.
Net of what is lost, and I'm very confident in that.
It's a net of what is lost. Okay, well, maybe, Mark, you know my question because we were talking about this yesterday is are you able to just clarify that? Because I want to, I'm trying, I'm trying to understand the differences between our approach and LA's approach. In some cases, you know, we're more conservative in some cases, and I think on this one, we may be left, but I want to make sure I'm correct on that. Oh, Mark, you're on mute.
Sorry, a year and a half and I still haven't figured it out. Sorry, Commissioner Broughton.
Councilmember, but who's counting?
I'm sorry. So if we have renewable energy remotely, it has to include the losses to come to the city. So it's the distribution losses that you might be referring to. And I think Dr. Doris was talking about six point three percent losses that are coming to us from remote generation. And I do believe that the remote generation is included.
That's correct.
Okay, well, we can, maybe offline, we'll drill into that more because I'm not entirely clear on that. But, okay, I guess the other thing was if we were to relax some of our constraints and, for instance, make an assumption that IPP does achieve the hydrogen goals, the green hydrogen goals that they're committing, I believe, for, is it twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five? How would that affect the number? If you plug that in, where would we be relative to that eighty-nine percent? And I don't know if you've done this, if you can do it on the fly, but, and Mark, maybe you already teed that up. And you're on.
Give me a second here. I think I can give you a rough estimate.
You know what I'm asking, right?
Yeah.
A very conservative, taking a conservative position, which is a good, a good starting point, right? And you're saying we can't count on what IPP says they're going to do, which is they're going to be they're going to have a portion of their generation being green hydrogen, starting, you know, twenty, what is it, twenty twenty-five?
Yes, sir.
Yeah. So if we were to say like, let's, let's count on them getting that done and, you know, how does that leave us?
It would eliminate about, looking at this, eyeballing it, about thirty-five percent of your carbon emissions from IPP. It would eliminate about thirty-five percent of your carbon emissions.
So where would it take that eighty-nine percent number that we're looking at by twenty thirty? Would that?
By twenty thirty, sorry, it would be about half. It would be half.
What, what do you mean? So that eighty-nine would be what?
Sorry, I actually, I'm sorry, math on the fly is not always easy. But it'd be at twenty thirty, eliminating emissions from IPP, which is about point five million metric tons in your total emissions are point oh five, excuse me, metric tons. Your total, million metric tons in your total is point two roughly. It's about, that'd be about twenty-five percent. So it's somewhere in that twenty-five, thirty percent zone, just eyeballing it.
Okay, I'm not, Mark, are you able to help on that? You know, I'm trying to get like that eighty-nine number. Does that go to ninety? Does it go to ninety-one? Does it go to ninety-five? Like, how sensitive is that number to IPP achieving what they've already, I believe, committed that they're going to achieve?
So the, the output of IPP would be ten percent of the output of IPP would then be clean. And I would, I haven't seen the model run to find out how many megawatts or megawatt hours that IPP has been allocated between twenty-five and twenty-seven, but it would be ten percent. Thirty percent by volume is equivalent to about ten percent hydrogen. So that would be ten percent of the output of IPP would be clean.
Okay, I'm not really getting an answer to my question. I want to know, what does it do to that eighty-nine percent number by twenty thirty?
If it was a hundred percent, it would go towards ninety-three percent.
Okay, since it's not a hundred, it would go to?
About ninety-three percent. That's correct.
If it's.
But it's not a hundred percent, as Mark noted.
Right, right, right. So that's what I'm trying to get at. So, okay, so we're talking maybe ninety-one? I mean, I'm just trying to get an order of magnitude here.
I think there's blends of hydrogen that are to be determined. But if it was fifty percent, it would be about ninety-one percent. That's correct.
Okay, but they're saying they're going to be thirty percent on day one, right?
I believe that's, that's on the mark. So that would be, you know, closer to ninety percent.
Okay.
Maybe half.
Okay, that's kind of, that's where I was going. Okay. I think, yeah, that's where I was going. Okay. All right. I'll yield the floor for now.
Thank you. Is there any other question from our experts? Anybody else? This is for information, right?
It's to notify.
Yes. Who was?
Mr. Najarian.
Okay, Councilmember Najarian.
So this is a receiving file. We're not taking a vote to approve the report or anything in that nature. I mean, it's, it's presented to us. So I appreciate, I appreciate the report. I was a little, you know, this whole bit about the ICE units was very controversial. So I feel a little bit vindicated that, Gary, your opinion is that the ICE units, mainly for reliability purposes, are necessary during that tightrope period of, what did you say, twenty twenty-four to twenty thirty? If I have the years correctly. So I know that we're looking to make those hydrogen when we get the chance. But the argument for those who are supporting the ICE units, which I was one of them, despite being carbon-based thermal energy, was that we needed it for the reliability. So I appreciate that. I think it's great that we're getting to an eighty-nine percent level at twenty thirty. And I, as you said, that is a conservative model. I appreciate that. LA is different. LA has a, what did they call it? A vertical integrated system where they've got the transmission lines at their whim and they can just load up on the renewable power, buy as much as they want and bring it in. And unfortunately, we're limited to those inner ties, the two hundred megawatt, one hundred from the Pacific and the Southwest. So that's always been an issue for us in Glendale. I think council needs to keep in mind when we're talking about the costs of this. I don't think anyone is saying that they, well, I haven't heard anyone saying that they don't want to pay more. But I think it would be a mistake for us to wait four or five years and then do a rate increase where residents are getting it with a ten percent rate, rate increase. I think that's going to cause a lot of unhappiness. I think a more regular cost of service, I guess we have to do a cost of service analysis at each increase. Or at least each time we decide on our increases, we should do it regularly. We just can't sit around and, you know, year five, say, here you go, folks, here's a ten percent increase. I think the public will sort of, many, many of the public will put in the back of their mind the the environmental preservation issues and just look at that bill and be really angry about it. So those are my comments. I appreciate the thorough report for Mark and everyone at GWP, Doug DeGhetto and whoever the, Mike DeGhetto and whoever the, I forgot the third musketeer running the show, as well as Dr. Gary. I appreciate the input. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there any other question or otherwise we go to, we can have a motion for this item?
Mayor, I do have three callers.
I'm sorry. We have callers. Okay, let's go to the caller.
Ted Flanagan, you're live. Ted, go ahead.
Thank you very much. Can you, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank, thank you very much. Good evening, Mayor Agajinian and Councilmembers Devine and Najarian, Kazakian and Broughton and City Manager and City Officials and Staff. My name is Ted Flanagan. I'm a resident of Glendale, proud of what Glendale Water and Power is doing. I am pleased to be serving on the Glendale Water and Power Commission. I am currently acting as the President of the Commission. I've spent my career working with electric utilities. I started in nineteen eighty-four as a strategic planner at the New York Power Authority. So I'd like to offer just a few comments. First off, as an industry, we've come a really long way. I really appreciate the Ascend report. It's very, very informative. Thanks to our colleagues at Ascend and to our colleagues at Glendale Water and Power for managing this report. The fact that we can achieve eighty-nine percent, well above the state's goals by twenty thirty of sixty percent above our own. above our own IRP's aspiration of 77%. In 1984, I never imagined cutting a utility's carbon footprint by 89%. That's 300,000 metric tons of carbon dioxide equivalent gases. So it may not be 100%, and of course, we all want 100% on around the clock, but it's huge. And I believe that it's also conservative, and I appreciate that, that the study is conservative, and that it's based on quote unquote "reality-based limit." So how do we get to 100%? In my view, we need to ramp up all of the in-town resources that we possibly can. It's all the technological development that was mentioned in the report. I'm an energy efficiency guy. I think we need to punch it out of the park. I think we need to double down on demand response. It's good for everybody. Solar on the residential front, we've got the virtual power plant project coming along I'm very proud of. And I would argue that we need multiple pathways for residential and commercial solar, including metenergy metered solar, feed-in tariff solar. Commercial solar, I think we can do multiples of the 20 megawatts mentioned in the ASCEND report. Obviously, storage is huge. Distributed storage is something that we're working on with the DPP, and we can do a lot more with. Fuel cells, microturbines, using as our, as Sam mentioned, our renewable natural gas and ultimately hydrogen are very appealing. These are in-town resources that we can partner with some of our major customers and have a greater and greater degree of local energy resilience. Vehicle to grid, I don't believe is mentioned in the ASCEND report. It is one of the biggest trends that's hitting the power sector. And it's hard, you know, we all, we all realize that as we all get electric vehicles, that's going to add a tremendous amount of demand to the power grid. Inversely, all of our electric vehicles plugged into the grid can serve as tremendous distributed energy resources. So these are the kinds of initiatives I'd like to see Glendale pursue for that last 11%. Local resources have great value to our systems, and they need to be fully tapped. So in conclusion, 100% by, 100% by 2030? Yeah, unlikely. I agree with ASCEND. 89% realistic. That's a big step. I salute GWP, the staff, and I salute ASCEND for the analysis. And I thank you all for this opportunity to present my perspective. So good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Flanagan. Next caller, please.
Monica Campagna. Monica?
Thank you. Good evening again, Mayor, and City Council and City Staff. Well, that was bravo for what Ted just said, and I, Mr. Flanagan, and I totally agree with his sentiments. Calling on behalf of the Glendale Environmental Coalition this time, and we've submitted comments about the 100% clean energy study, and I'm just calling in to summarize some of those comments. We are very grateful for council's leadership and the work by GWP staff and ASCEND Analytics to consider the potential for reaching 100% clean energy around the clock for Glendale's power needs. We say bravo. This report's a great start for what we hope will be a continuing effort to push toward 100% clean energy as soon as we can. We also agree with Mr. Flanagan that the report is somewhat conservative, but what that tells us is that even viewed conservatively, we have a good potential for reaching mostly clean energy within a decade. That's fantastic news. And like I said, this is just a starting point. We support, Councilmember Brotman suggested that Glendale study multiple pathways for how to achieve 100% clean energy here. And we are especially interested in assessing how to meet that need without purchasing new gas-burning equipment. Yes, we understand the reliability issue and that those units would only be used a few days a year, but perhaps we can look further into other ways of doing that with dispatchable capacity that looks more closely at green hydrogen produced with renewable energy that's created here, instead of having to curtail that energy like we are projecting we'll have to do. We appreciate that the IRP analysis will include this 100% clean energy scenario moving forward. In addition to that, we would like to see annual updates that assess the progress towards 100% clean energy goals. We're also asking that council, and any one of you could make this motion, that council pass a motion or a resolution, however you see fit, for Glendale to commit to 100% clean energy by 2035. We know that procedurally, approval may not be able to happen tonight, but we're asking for that to happen as soon as possible, preferably by this summer. Last, request for proposals for commercial solar and other local distributed energy resources. Really are long overdue. It takes a very long time for these projects to come down through the pipeline. We'd love to see a motion put forward for a new round of RFPs for commercial solar and other distributed energy resources. So to wrap up, we applaud you. We applaud City Council and staff and appreciate what has come from this process so far. We need an energy portfolio that's sustainable for the long term, and that means 100% clean energy. We're all in this together, and we ask you to keep pushing for that goal. Thank you.
Thank you. Next caller, please.
John Wells, you're live. John, go ahead.
Yes, thank you for taking my call. I applaud you for looking for clean energy to find some way to not harm the planet. There's a company called Ambry. It's an MIT professor, Professor Donald Sadoway. His new battery technology is a liquid metal battery. It's made for mass storage. They're doing a huge project up in Reno. I think it's a 500-megawatt project using these batteries. They can be recycled 100% and used thousands of times without any degradation over 20 years. They're better than the lithium-ion batteries that are out there now. The other thing with the solar and wind, I love the idea. I wish it was better than it is, but we're having a huge problem with toxic waste from the windmills when they go down. They don't have a place to bury them. Solar panels, EPA has regulations regarding the cadmium and the lead in those panels. So part of the thing you have to factor in is when those panels go bad in 20 years, what are you going to do with all the toxic waste? I don't think we have a good solution for that. Plus, solar panels are about 300 times more toxic waste when compared to nuclear energy, which I know everybody hates the idea of. And having lived not too far from Three Mile Island when that problem happened, I never thought I'd be a fan of nuclear, but modern nuclear technology, like they have in France, is something we should look into. We're great at saying how clean California is, but we import a lot of dirty energy from coal plants. Same thing with like the solar panels being made in China. The vast majority are becoming out of China now, wouldn't be used, all coal-fired plants. So we feel good, but we're actually not really helping the planet if that's where we're sourcing our materials from. Another thing is possibly, if our engineers could look at the millions of gallons of water, wastewater, the city flushes all the time, if we could somehow install some kind of a hydroelectric system on our wastewater lines to possibly recapture some of that, the possibility. Thank you very much. Bye-bye.
Thank you. Next caller, please.
Joanna Pringle, you're next. Joanna?
Hello?
Hi.
My family has lived in Glendale for more than 35 years, and I just want to express our gratitude that you understand the urgency of moving to 100% clean energy. So we're really excited about your progress here. Please push forward for zero carbon by 2035, and thank you all.
Thank you. Next caller.
Mike Mohill, you're live. Go ahead, Mike.
Hi there, Councilmembers. Mike Mohill here. Mike Mohill here. Good evening again. You know, everybody wants clean energy. Who doesn't? But a lot of this is called wishful thinking. Wishful thinking. Does anybody remember what happened recently in the state of Texas? Those windmills were all frozen? You know, the only reliable energy is gas, petroleum, and nuclear. Oh, it's a bad word, but you know what? Why is, we always look at Europe for a leadership, but yet now, you don't want to look at Europe for leadership when it comes to nuclear energy. That's the cleanest you can work. You don't have to worry about the windmills. You don't have to worry about batteries and the disposal of batteries and the solar panels. You have, we should do some real careful thinking how we spend our resources. Again, who doesn't want clean energy? But how you get there, there's no rush to this. Ask the Chinese, the Communist Chinese government, are they rushing for clean energy? Is India the country? Are they rushing for clean energy? Just the opposite. So as we rush for clean energy, our cost of energy goes up, and their cost of energy goes down. And we're in a competitive world market today. So we have to think very, very carefully when you think about clean energy. There are some areas we can do it, but you know, you got to have a backup. And when the power is down, you know, when your lights go out, your cell phones don't work, your telephones don't work, the wash machine doesn't work, the dryer doesn't work, your heater doesn't go on, your air conditioning unit, hey, the windmills go down too. The solar panels deteriorate too.
Thank you.
We can have a balance, but let's not rush for renewable energy. Thank you.
Thank you. Next caller, please.
Mayor, it looks like I do have a caller. I'm waiting for the name to pop up first. Can we wait about 30 seconds?
Yes, I can wait forever.
Mayor, I do have a caller, but it looks like this caller has called in before for the same item.
Let's listen, let's listen.
No double dipping, Mr. Mayor.
I'm sorry?
We have an informal policy of no double dipping for the same item.
Okay. Is he, is she still there?
Mr. John Wells is still on the line, yes.
Mr. Wells?
Wells is his name, yes.
Mr. Wells, you already spoke about this item.
I know, I forgot one thing that was very important, if I might, real quick.
If it's in one minute, you're welcome to do it.
30 seconds. When Germany switched from nuclear and coal to renewable solar and wind, the average German electric bill went up three times what it normally was. That was all. Thank you.
Thank you.
And that was the last caller, Mayor.
Thank you. Very few people, they pay attention. So if I have one person calling, I appreciate their call, and that's why I don't want to cut them off or not to give them the chance. Thank you very much. What's next?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Brotman.
Yeah, I wanted to make some comments.
Yes, please, go ahead.
Okay, so first of all, I want to, I want to say how exciting this is to me personally. And I want to just point out how, how different things are now than they were three years ago. I think, as you know, that we were going down the wrong path in 2017, was it? Four years ago, when the original Grayson Repowering Project came to council. I think we're really going down the right path now. And I want to thank a lot of people, because a lot of people were involved in this. Obviously, Glendale Environmental Coalition and their advocacy, the foresight of this council, in particular, Councilmember Devine's specific request for a 2030 study. And I want to thank Mark and his colleagues at Glendale Water and Power for willingness to step up and relook at things and get out of their comfort zone. And I think in the process, you all, and I'm talking about GWP, you know, learned a lot, right? And learned a lot about new technologies and got excited about some of them, especially batteries, I think, and saw their potential. And no blame to anybody, because I think when, when the original Grayson Project was put together and conceived back probably 2014, maybe even earlier, the technology wasn't there for us to do what we're doing, what we're talking about doing now. The world shifted under all of our feet, and it's just really encouraging that we have collectively been able to shift and move in a very, very positive direction. So I'm really pleased. Also want to thank ASCEND for this work that they've done. When I first heard about the, you know, circa 90% number from Steve Zern a few months ago, I was very excited and encouraged. As I looked at the report and saw how you were not putting any bets on any technology that's not in the here and now, I thought that was even better. So looking at that 80%, 89% number, I'm sorry, it's a, it's a great starting point. What, what I would like to see, and I hope it's appropriate if I can ask for a follow-up report. I know this is a note and file, but if I could ask one of my colleagues to support me on this, what I would like is for ASCEND and GWP to come back with a report to show us what it would take to get to 100% clean energy by 2035. And I agree with Mr. Flanagan, 100% by 2030, that last couple percent is going to cost so much. Nobody's doing it. And we can see where LA is. LA is talking about 98% by 2030, and that last 2% being extremely difficult, but they're stepping up and making a, a policy commitment that they're going to get there by 2035. They haven't formalized it yet, but that's the direction they seem to be going. So I would like us to do something similar. I would like us to ultimately make a policy decision that we are going to commit to 100% clean energy by 2035, and some number, I, I hope that it's at least 95% by 2030, but let's see, some number that's very close to 100 by 2030. And I would like us to do that. But before asking my colleagues to support that, or even for myself supporting it, I want to know what it looks like. So that's why I would like a report that just shows us, what are some of the pathways? What are some of the things? For, for instance, the hydrogen at IPP, that maybe gets us a couple percentage points, right? Can we do more with solar and storage on commercial rooftops? I think we can do more than the 20 megawatts. What can we do with demand response? And what additionally can we do with energy efficiency? One of the things in, in the ASCEND slides, I forget which slide number it was, looking at investments you can make to reduce your carbon emissions, the very cheapest thing you can do is energy efficiency, right? I mean, that is by far and away the cheapest approach. I know you've built in some assumptions for energy efficiency in this model based on the CEC guidelines, but I'd like to look at what could we achieve if we were to really aggressively go for energy efficiency opportunities beyond what we have already modeled? Those are some of the things, I don't want to spell it all out. There are a lot of other things. Mr. Flanagan talked about, you know, vehicle electrification, what did, what did he call it? Vehicle to grid? I forget what the term is, but you know, that's a really important area as well. So that would be my request, if you could come back with that. And then we can say, all right, this is what it looks like or could look like. Now, maybe we can, you know, kind of go out on a limb and make a little bit of an aspirational statement that we are going to get there some way or another, kind of like, you know, John Kennedy got us to, to the moon, right? When the technology wasn't all there, but the assumption was, we'll find it, we'll get it, and we'll make it happen.
Thank you. Is there any other?
If I could have a colleague support that, I would like to, I would like to ask staff to do that.
May I make a comment? May I comment before we?
Please, go ahead, Ms. Devine.
I've been waiting. Thank you to ASCEND for this comprehensive report. I really appreciate it since, you know, I kind of asked for this. Because it's a conservative report, you know, I, I think we, we have to be positive and optimistic. And I wrote down some of the descriptions that, that were mentioned, that this is a transparent plan, ambitious, forward-thinking, ahead of the curve, realistic, best-case pathway to 100% clean energy. The report said, and you said that we have, we can provide possible clean around-the-clock energy. I think we're already aspiring to the best and the biggest goal that we can. With technology moving the way it is, With technology moving the way it is, and I, I want to comment on the callers because, you know, I'm always so impressed with the knowledge that they have, um, uh, when they're, when they're faced with these, these agenda items. And I really appreciate them calling in with all these ideas. This is a note and file, um, report. And so I, you know, I, we should, we will note and file it with the, um, suggestions. Uh, I think that to give up on 100% by, uh, 2030 is, is, I don't know if that's unreal. I think we should just stay the course. I feel confident that staff is going to keep up with technology. You are going to, they are going to reach for the stars when it comes to our clean energy. And everyone knows we are aspiring to 100% renewable, uh, as soon as possible. And I don't think to putting a date on it is, is making it any more dram, many more, any more important or, um, any more ambitious or aspirational. Um, I think our goal is 100% renewable as soon as possible. And I think we have a staff that's working towards that. We have a council that is, uh, bound and determined, dedicated to that happening. And, uh, and I look forward to, uh, to that day. I hope that, uh, it is, uh, you know, it comes to fruition sooner than we think. And, um, that, that ends my comments for tonight. Thank you, Mayor.
Is there any other comments? Okay, Mr. Councilmember Kusakian.
Mr. Mayor? Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Kusakian.
I'll, I'll make my, I'll make my comments brief, obviously. I didn't want to, I didn't have as many questions as my colleagues did, although I did. That's no indication of, um, my reaction or, um, how I've received that report. Uh, it's been impressive. Obviously, this is a, um, the goal of reaching, uh, as much clean energy as possible, getting to 100% clean renewable. Uh, it's a mission critical factor, uh, towards addressing the issues that we're facing as a planet, um, as residents, as, uh, people who want to pass along, uh, a place with clean water, clean air to our children, um, our grandchildren, and in terms of building climate change resiliency. Uh, so I think that this is putting us on the good path. But in order to stay on that path, I, I don't have an issue with the request Councilmember Brotman made. Um, if there wants, if he wants to have, uh, a subsequent report towards that goal to make sure that we, make sure that we stay on the right path, um, I'd support that. As far as one of the callers, I know that, um, it was mentioned that, uh, China and India are not moving in this direction. Um, the only thing I will say is, uh, I'll be darned if I ever am comparing myself and our country and our efforts here in the United States, um, to China or to India, with all due respect to them. And I say this because when you look at the 50 most, the question, I, I, the assumption is that they're not doing anything, they're going to have their economies grow. Therefore, we're suckers for doing the right thing by making sure that we have clean air to breathe, clean energy, um, clean water. And I will only say this, uh, you know, that they will be able to ride that for only so long until people react. Clean air and clean water are basic human rights. We learned that in this country in the 1970s when the EPA was established under Richard, President Richard Nixon, um, and we have fought very hard to get to where we are here today. 50 of the most polluted, the cities with the greatest amount of air pollution, which affects people's daily lives and has serious health consequences. This is not imagined. This is actual science that has been around for a decade. 50 of the most polluted cities in the world are all in either India, Pakistan, China, or Bangladesh. And that will, and the people in those cities can only tolerate that for so long before those countries have to come to terms with what they're doing to their environment and to the globe as well. So that's all I'll say. And thank you that we're making, uh, an effort here in our corner of the globe to do the right thing.
Thank you. We have callers. Let's go to the other callers.
Kate Unger, you're live, Kate.
Hi there. I missed the, the original cutoff. So I'm really glad that you all are willing to listen to me. And I'm going to keep this really short because I know it's a long meeting. Just wanted to say, you know, there's no time to wait here. The climate emergency is the defining crisis of our time. And it's accelerating more quickly than we'd expected. And there's no cost-benefit analysis that supports anything other than moving as fast as we can because the costs are infinite. Glendale is moving fast and can continue to do that and push for 100% clean energy as technology continues to open up new options. We're so pleased with city leadership. We're so pleased with your commitment and we just ask you to keep pushing. Thank you all so much.
Thank you. Okay. Is there any other comment by my council members before we go to, to take a motion on this? Any comments?
Mayor, there is no need to take a motion. It's note and file.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, motion to note and file, sorry.
Yeah. Uh, before we go to this, when I came here, I said before, in 2017, uh, there was already decided that there will be 250 megawatt of, uh, gas machines, gas turbines. And I was surprised because when I was going to college, university, we were studying in 1970 with these gas turbines. And I was shocked that how in 2017, still, this city wants to buy gas machines. And really surprised me. I'm glad that I was against it. And Mr. Zern, uh, GWP Director or Manager, he took me, I said this before, there is a little room way on the third floor. I never been there before until he explained to me that, uh, well, they will work on it. When I said this, it's impossible to, I will not agree to it. And he promised me that he will reduce it. The first, next time we went and met was to 191 megawatt. And the other following times, we went to 150, 120. And I was saying, if it's more than 100 megawatt, I'm not going to accept it because this is not the time to have gas machines. Eventually, he came and told me, okay, we're going to have 93 megawatt of gas and different things. I'm glad that I was part of it. And I never got credit for it, but that's fine. Now with that, uh, anybody wants, oh, Mr. Brotman, you were going to say something? I'm sorry. Is there anything to?
No, no.
Can I have a motion to move this item? Can I have a motion for this?
I'll, I'll move the note and file.
Okay. Is there a second? Is there a second?
Second, I'll second.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Brotman?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Kusakian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Mayor Agajanian?
Yes. Next item, please.
Next item would be 8B, Management Services Regarding Background on the CalPERS Retirement System and Seeking Direction for the Creation of a Pension Review Committee. Uh, 8B1, Motion Directing Staff on Creation of a Pension Review Committee, Including, uh, Composition, Selection and Role of Committee. Two, Motion, uh, to Note and File. Three, Resolution of Appropriation of Funds From Undesignated General Fund Balance in the Amount of Three, uh, $30,000 For the Engagement of Professional Facilitation and Subject Matter Expert Presentation to the Pension Review Committee.
Thank you. Mr. Golanyan?
Yes. Mayor Agajanian, Member of City Council. Staff is presenting this report in response to requests from at least three council members in some shape, way or form, uh, in, um, establishing a pension review committee. Mr. Tuktalion is going to present the report to council, uh, with some background on PERS and our liabilities. But the emphasis is going to be on the establishment of the pension review committee tonight. Um, Ms. Michelle Flynn, our Director of Finance, is also available in case questions come up regarding our financial standing related to PERS, as well as Matt Doyle, our Director of Human Resources Department. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Tuktalion.
Mr. Tuktalion.
Good evening, Mayor Agajanian, Members of the City Council. Uh, as, uh, Mr. Golanyan mentioned, uh, this report was a result of a number of requests from city council members over the last several months. And the report's broken out into, uh, three primary sections. The first was a bit of a background and analysis on PERS. The second was some specifics on, uh, the financials. But as I've come to realize in our, uh, our round robin briefings, uh, the, the primary emphasis or interest on behalf of council is really to focus on the creation of a committee, um, that would go and review, uh, all the, all the, um, the intricate details, truly take a deep dive into what PERS is, how it works, uh, and ultimately come back and provide a, uh, a report and findings and a set of recommendations, uh, to the city council. So I'll focus on that section. Uh, if there's any desire on council to delve into any of the additional details in the report, I'd be happy to do that alongside Michelle Flynn and, uh, Matt Doyle. Um, so the primary purpose of the committee that's being recommended or proposed would be to gain a better understanding of the overall pension system structure. Um, it, the, the committee members would also discover what the future anticipated costs would be and ultimately advise the city council on the options and priorities for addressing, addressing those pension costs and reducing the unfunded liability that we hear about quite frequently. In terms of roles and responsibilities for this particular committee, uh, staff foresees that the, the committee would review the city's pension system and offer a better understanding regarding the structure. Uh, they would independently conduct a review, uh, and provide an opinion on what the city's accomplished to date with its pension reform efforts. In fact, Glendale's pension reform efforts go back all the way to the 1980s, in fact, when employees began, uh, and the, the cost-sharing processor at least picking up their share of the, the pension costs. Another, uh, set of role and responsibilities would be to recommend options for reducing or eliminating the city's unfunded actuarial liability, uh, reviewing alternative financing methods to potentially, um, that are potentially available to the city, uh, evaluating the feasibility or offering alternative retirement solutions aside from CalPERS, the CalPERS system, uh, and finally producing that final report and a set of recommendations that I mentioned a few moments ago. In terms of the committee's composition, the makeup of this committee, uh, we would propose that council consider, uh, creating committee that, that's made up of somewhere between seven and 11 members. Uh, seven and 11 really was the number, uh, that, that we're proposing because it really represents, the seven represents really the, the primary, um, the, the preferred number of people, uh, that work well in groups, somewhere in that five to seven range. Uh, the, the 11 was really to provide council the opportunity to expand, uh, the number of people and the interests, uh, that are going to be represented and the voices to be heard on that particular committee. Anything beyond that, uh, gets very difficult to, to sort of manage. In terms of who those committee members would be, uh, we would propose that council, uh, appoint five members, one by each council member, and allow the city manager to, uh, appoint three individuals, um, that would, uh, in total represent the interests of all five employee bargaining groups. That, those two equal eight. Uh, the additional three positions that, that we're, we're mentioning could be available really would be there at the discretion of the city council. Um, we're open to ideas or, or recommendations or thoughts from council in terms of whether they want to fill those additional three seats, um, or not. Uh, in terms of requirements, minimum requirements, uh, what we would suggest that the committee ultimately reflect a wide variety, uh, background, uh, have different perspectives, different, represent different interests. Uh, but most importantly, I think, given the subject matter and the complexities associated with this, um, specifically in the fields of law, accounting, actuarial accounting, um, we would suggest that council consider appointing people to this committee who have a background, uh, in those fields. In terms of how the selection process, uh, should be run, um, we, uh, we thought it would be best to perhaps follow a, a similar process, uh, that we follow currently for our board and commission member appointments, uh, where we would solicit interest from interested community members, um, through an open application process. That process could be open for a period of three weeks or longer, depending on how many applications are, are, uh, are received. Uh, council would be provided all those applications, um, for review and we can go one of two ways following that. Um, either council members can make those direct, direct appointments themselves or they can, uh, make the appointments in coordination and communication with the city manager. In other words, may, uh, meet with the city manager, go through the applications, um, make their recommendation and have the city manager make the, the selection. It really doesn't matter to, to staff which way we go. Um, either way, because the committee is being established by the city council, um, the committee will be a brown acted committee. So, uh, either way, the public will have access to all of these deliberations. Once the committee is established, um, what we would foresee is having meetings every other week. And we would do that, we anticipate, again, given the complexity and the level of detail and our desire to, uh, really allow the committee to ask all the questions, dig in as deep as they need to, uh, you know, perhaps the, the need to bring in subject matter experts to help fill in the gaps, we would anticipate that those meetings would conclude sometime in December um, of 2021. And, uh, what we would do is provide a final report and a set of recommendations shortly after the final report that's, that's reviewed and approved by the, the committee chair and the committee overall. And, uh, in terms of where the committee would meet, that's still up in the air given COVID restrictions. Um, it, it might have to just go along the same path as we, we currently hold our board and commission meetings. Perhaps it could be a hybrid where the chair, uh, of the committee is in a room with staff and all the other committee members are available, um, or participating via WebEx. The final, um, point that, that we wanted to discuss with council was the appropriation request that was included in the staff report. Um, in the staff report, we talk about, uh, we asked council to consider appropriating approximately $30,000. Now, we don't think it'll cost $30,000. This is really a not-to-exceed request of $30,000. Uh, it's, but it's based on, uh, what we believe would be the number of hours uh, that may be required, uh, to hire a professional facilitator, uh, as well as subject matter experts who can speak on the merits of, uh, of the system itself. Not necessarily the merits, but really speak to the details of the, of the system itself. Um, really, the, the interest in hiring a professional facilitator, staff can do it, certainly. Uh, we do it for all of our other board and commission meetings. Um, but this was our, uh, attempt at trying to ensure that there was no accusation of, of unfairness. Um, we, we truly think that a neutral third party, uh, to represent sort of this process is, is the best way to go, uh, to allow the committee to kind of take, take this conversation in the direction they feel is most necessary. That facilitators essentially would help the, the committee to establish their purpose and provide clarity in the process. Um, they would engage the committee members in all of the conversations so that the conversations are actually productive and move along. They, if there are any, um, any disagreements or, or, uh, you know, a, a need for a, you know, a neutral third person, that facilitator who is a professional in that field would be able to, to manage those, uh, those situations. But most importantly, it's really to ensure that everybody's voice on the committee is ultimately heard. That's, that would take up a portion of that $30,000 request. The other portion would, would be specific to any, uh, subject matter experts that we would bring in. Again, it's a complex issue. It's an, it's an issue that crosses different disciplines, including, you know, contract law, pension law, um, basic accounting, actuarial accounting, which is, uh, a beast in and of itself, um, a, as well as human resources. There is a whole discussion, I think, the committee will, will need to have with respect to the, the personnel side of any of the implications of making changes to a system, which I think is a healthy conversation to have. Uh, specifically, I, I speak to, um, the issue of, of recruitment and retention, um, of, of employees. So with that, that sort of lays out the framework for what staff anticipated council's desire would be with respect to the formation of a committee. What we're looking for at this point from council is direction on whether or not the, this committee should be formed and if the, the proposed structure is, uh, is acceptable. And I'm, I'm available, Michelle's available, Matt is available to answer. Any additional questions on items that I haven't covered but might be in the report?
I just, uh, did you say five? We will, um, each will appoint one person and will be three from staff side will be, uh, appointed to this committee.
The, uh, Mayor Agajanian, that is the, the suggestion from staff. That's the recommendation. That's the recommendation? The idea would be that you have five bargaining units, you have five employee associations. We don't anticipate having each a member from each of the associations sitting on this committee. But I think there needs to be some level of representation to speak to some of the issues with respect to the employees that would absolutely be impacted and can speak to some of the issues related to this from their perspective. No different than a member of the public needing to be heard, having their perspective heard on this matter.
I was somehow under impression that we will get people who have some knowledge about this issue to discuss it and come back to recommend to us. Is this, we are going to recommend to employees also?
No. No, Mayor, the recommendation will ultimately come back to the mayor and city council. The discussions are amongst the committee members, and what we're recommending is a committee that's made up somewhere between seven and 11 members. Council can choose up to, say, 11 members to be on this committee, representing different perspectives, different interests, so that there could be a holistic conversation with respect to this particular issue.
All right. So what's next, Mayor?
I think we have callers.
Oh, we have callers? We don't want to wait for our expert to speak now?
We can answer questions.
We don't want to, we don't want her to present?
Unless there's...
You have nothing to present? Or you just came here to answer the question? All right, so let's go to the callers.
Mayor, I have two callers on this one. One of them is Herbert Mulano, you're live, go ahead.
Thank you. I'm Mayor Agajanian and council members, my name is Herbert Mulano. Six years ago, the city council received a report to understand and define a process for tackling the growing unfunded pension burden. The report was presented and filed. Now, it is six years later, with the unfunded obligations growing relentlessly despite the efforts by the city to pay down tens of millions of dollars towards that unfunded burden. That burden has grown to nearly $600 million according to the last year's comprehensive annual financial report. That is a debt that translates into $8,000 per Glendale household. In the year 2002, the city had a pension obligation surplus of $34 million. By the following year, there was a major correction to the CalPERS investment that turned that $34 million surplus into a deficit of $24 million. That obligation has now grown to nearly $600 million. The city needs to create effective public awareness of how that growing debt places the city into potentially financial jeopardy. The impact to Glendale is not only that the city is severely underfunding road and sidewalk construction. It is not only that the city can't increase parkland in the most deficient parts of the city. It is not just that the city has turned to increase taxation and fees to help reduce its financial shortfall. Every major long-term goal the city has is severely impacted by the financial burden, including its own goals towards clean energy that you discussed tonight. That deficit prevents the city from acting proactively to help its residents during major prolonged emergencies, such as the impact that the pandemic had on residents this past year. The city could have helped its residents significantly, but that $600 million unfunded obligation tied up the city financially. How many worthy programs were postponed or scrapped because they were cost prohibitive? And yet, we appear to be sinking $50 million a year, every year that is unfunded and unpayable. For 20 years, the city has not informed its residents adequately on this issue in a way that the public could grasp its importance. And it is my belief that we waited a very long time to increase transparency so as to create the right level of awareness for you yourselves and to the general public as well. So the city needs a special fact-finding pension review committee or commission. And it is my hope that you take this financially put in first step and shining a light on this severe problem. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mulano. Is there any other caller?
Yes, Mayor, there's one more caller. Mike, go ahead, you're live, Mike.
Good evening, council members. Mike Mohill here. First of all, I'd like to thank the three council members who suggested that council make this for discussion. Yesterday was 2015, I believe, when Mrs. Paul Devine requested that we do a review on CalPERS, and the report went nowhere but note and filed. Today, we have a new council and new interest by the public. Do you have my PowerPoint there, Arm?
Yeah, give me about a second, let me bring it up.
As he's bringing it up, ladies and gentlemen in the viewing audience, we're going downhill, not uphill with Mohill. You will see that every year, our pension, our payment to CalPERS goes up, up, up. Your utility bills are going up, up, up to pay for that debt. Now, as far as the committee, the pension committee, it should contain nobody, let me underline the word, nobody, who has an interest with our government union. That means current and retired. Because if they are on the committee, their interest is to protect themselves. I'm speaking in behalf of Glendale residents and the children of Glendale who are paying for these outrageous salaries and retirement pension benefits for our CalPERS union workforce. This is outrageous. And the only way we can do this is have a committee that has no developer's interest, no real estate interest, strictly Glendale interest. Our goal should be to terminate CalPERS, not to stay with CalPERS. We should pay off our union employees and going forward, all new employees should be on social security and a 401K plan, just like 90% of the American workforce, who get a pension of $100,000 for life. CalPERS employees are making between 25% and 35% more than in private industry. Again, this Blue Ribbon Committee should include nobody, let me underline the word, nobody who has an interest with the union. We should have people who have a financial background, lawyers, all that's good stuff. But again, no interest, nobody from the staff especially. Arm, you have that PowerPoint, please?
Yes, Mike, can you see it?
I don't see it on my screen here.
Let me try it again.
It's kind of small. Ladies and gentlemen, the viewing audience, as many of you know, I have a community newsletter that goes out often during the month, and I've talked about this CalPERS crisis, and I've presented these statistics. And if Arm can get that PowerPoint up, it would be greatly appreciated.
Mike, can you see it?
Yes. Yes, it's on the screen.
It's on the screen.
Not on my screen. Oh, it's awfully small.
You can hit...
The tablet is on the screen.
Okay, let me just read you what it says up there, okay? It says prior to 2018, taxpayers were spending to CalPERS on average about $20 million every year, taken right off the top from Glendale Water and Power Revenue Fund and not from the surplus fund in violation of our city charter. In 2018, Glendale City Council doubled its payment to CalPERS, spending $40,847,000 to the corrupt pension plan for our government union employees' retirement pension plan. In 2019, Glendale taxpayers sent to CalPERS a staggering check in the amount of $41,999,274. And in 2020, Glendale taxpayers sent CalPERS a staggering whopping $55.6 million. Ladies and gentlemen in the viewing audience, this is money that could have been used for affordable housing, parks, recreation, senior programs for junior high kids, you name it. Fix the roads, fix the sidewalks. It's all, all our money is going to these union employees. We need to terminate CalPERS. That should be the goal of this Blue Ribbon Committee. No Nancy, 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 nonsense, nonsense, nonsense. Thank you for your time and consideration. And again, I want to appreciate the three council members who suggested to make this a report. And I hope it's a meaningful report with meaningful people on the committee. Thank you again.
Thank you, Mr. Mohill. Okay, is there any other caller?
Mayor, there are no calls, but we do have a lag between 45 seconds and a minute every time they see this. So can we wait about 30 seconds to 45 seconds to see if there's any phone calls?
We can go back to the callers a little bit later. So if you get a caller, I don't mind, we will connect. Okay. Is there any, Mr. Najarian?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I'll lead this off. I think I was one of the three council members that asked for this in one shape or another. And I think it's important. You know, there seems to be this conception of opaqueness, that what we do with CalPERS is somehow secretive, it's somehow inequitable and unfair to the residents of Glendale, too imposing on our budget. You know, I've been around since 2005, just a few years after council granted the additional retirement and pension benefits in 2000, I believe, where they were told that they could go ahead and increase pension and it wouldn't cost anything. So I came around in 2005. At that point, the city realized that the CalPERS fund was not going to be super funded anymore, that there were going to have to be continual and increasing payments by the cities, all the cities and agencies that are in CalPERS. And the city of Glendale, the councils at that time, did take strong efforts in working with the employee unions in getting contributions from their part of CalPERS and many other things that we've talked about in the past and that hopefully this committee, if we agreed to form it, are going to discuss. But it's really, it's always, turns out that, you know, one or two examples are picked out and the council is vilified for awarding these high pensions. CalPERS seems, you know, the idea is that we can just switch from CalPERS like we switch our checking accounts from B of A to Wells Fargo and somehow get into a better system. So it's important, you know, the point of this committee or commission, whatever we're going to call it, is to provide complete transparency to members of the public. So when someone says that our pensions are too high and that we're paying too much and that we should just jump into another program, that we really look at what it costs for that to happen and we look at what Glendale has done. Glendale has led the state of California in pension reform. There's no other city in the state of California that has the pension reform that we've put in, which is in conjunction with the CalPERS. So I think this is really an important exercise for us to have this committee, have it with people. You know, I'm willing to appoint Mike Mohill to this committee because he's one of the most vocal critics, and I don't begrudge him that. I mean, he has a point of view that he makes often. But it's important that he and others, there are others like Mr. Mohill who think that, you know, what are we doing? Why are we paying these outrageous rates? Why are our CalPERS rates going up by millions of dollars each year? It's important that the community understand that. And if there are options, what are those options? We've heard, I won't get into it, but I know council member Devine has spoken about that. We've had professors, economics professors, actuaries, explain what it would cost to get out of CalPERS. And I believe those people, there is a cost to getting out of CalPERS. The point is, is this something that the city of Glendale can afford? So I fully support this. Perhaps it's long overdue, it has to be as transparent as possible. You mentioned this will be a Brown Act meeting. I hope that it's broadcast on GTV6. I hope we promote people to tune in and understand our finances and discuss what options we have as a city to going forward to meet our pension obligations and what, if any, modifications to those pension obligations we can make in the future. I hope that in that discussion, we do have experts coming in to testify. I would hope that we have an HR person coming in to say, for example, hey, if you offer, you know, an extremely low pension to a new employee, you're not going to get good employees. You're going to have, you know, second-rate employees or whatever the particular nuance might be. I hope that that is put out there so we can go forward and not discuss falsehoods or half-truths or innuendos. Let's get it all out there, and we have a budget coming up. We're going to see the impact of the CalPERS in our budget discussions. But let's get it out there so everyone knows what's going on and we don't have this continual undercurrent of misinformation that we currently have. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Ms. Devine?
Thank you, thank you. I want to thank the M&amp;M's, Mr. Mohill and Mr. Mulano, for remembering that occurrence six years ago when I was first on council and that report on pensions came to council. And I requested, at that very moment, I requested a Blue Ribbon Committee, and I was voted down by my colleagues. And now here it is, six years later, and we're finally doing it. And I'm very, very happy that this is being done. Councilmember Najarian is absolutely right, that we have always been ahead of the curve. I remember when I was, we were able to attend conferences and pension reform was like, every conference had a workshop on pension reform. And I remember sitting in these conferences, hearing cities who were going bankrupt because of their pensions. And I sat there and I, and we were doing, our council was doing so many things to make sure that we were not put in that position. And I was so proud of our council and the city and the reforms that we were doing. However, I think it's, we've always been criticized and questioned about whether we have been on the right track, is what we're doing the right, the only way, the right way. I went to a conference, and Mr. Mohill was at the same conference, about pension reform. It was a professor from Caltech. And I asked him at the end, is there a way Glendale can get out of our CalPERS? And he said, no, you can't afford it. Cities cannot afford to get out. So this committee, this Blue Ribbon Task Force or Commission or Committee, whatever we will call it, can look at all of the ins and outs of our pension, of CalPERS, what we are doing, what we can do. Is there something else we can do? I don't know. We keep looking around at different, you know, there are some are issuing bonds, et cetera. But this commission would allow a lot of transparency. It would answer questions for the community. As council member, I don't want to repeat everything, but it could either reinforce what we're doing and it can also bring us new ideas. And whatever the case may be, I welcome, I welcome their report. So I'm absolutely in support of creating this Blue Ribbon Panel.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Is there any, Mr. Kusakia?
Thank you, Mayor. And I think that this is important because of all the reasons that have been stated. I've also spoken on this, supported it, and I think one of the challenges we have as council members is that we're expected to be experts in everything. And, you know, certainly municipal finance is something that takes a while to understand, to understand how these pensions impact the city. to understand how these pensions impact the city, takes a lot of work and a lot of research. And it's very difficult for us to make these big policy decisions, oftentimes without the input of experts. And with all due respect to staff, you know, staff has what it can do, but, you know, let's face it, they partially also have somewhat skin in the game. So I think it's important to make sure that we also bring individuals from our community who are experts, who understand finance, who understand banking, who understand HR. And certainly, I have no issue with bringing in individuals from our bargaining units. And quite honestly, I think it's unfortunate that we live in an era where individuals who decide to organize to represent themselves in any field are denigrated. You know, the point of this body isn't to denigrate city staff. Glendale's employees work hard. We have a safe city and clean city, and we are always asking staff to do more with less. Last week, when we had winds unlike any I've seen recently and power went out, it was city staff that was out there, making sure power was back on to neighborhoods, making sure that our city was clean and safe. So now, one of the reasons for we have such a high-quality city is that, you know, because we continue to have great employees, but we also are always asking staff to do more with less. And that is related to the fact that we continue to pay CalPERS unfunded liability share that continues to increase, as was stated in the report. You know, as I read a report, I think the Little Hoover Commission had done a report back in 2011 that said, since 2008, when there was the major recession, only 27 governments out of the 1,500 that comprise California's public employee retirement system network adopted less generous pension benefits for new hires. And I believe Glendale was one of those, while 193 actually increased the benefits to employees during the recession. Now, I don't want to make our projections and plan for the future on a system that's based on overly optimistic actuarial assumptions. I want us, you know, this is obviously, that approach has taken us down this parallelist path that we're all facing. And what I would like to do is see a body that can study this, can make recommendations that represents everyone. And one of the comments I have about the report, I know that the suggestion is to have a body where each councilperson, I guess, appoints one person. I don't see why we can't have two appointees each. There is a precedent for that. When there was a committee put together to study what the city would do in lieu of a flag lowering for the commemoration of the Armenian genocide and for commemorating other crimes against humanity, there was an ad hoc committee that was comprised of a number of folks in the community. I think relegating it just to a few individuals is not fair. I think also it may pose more difficulty to have a quorum. I think if each of us was to have two people and if the employee unions were represented as well, then I think that's fair and there is really no concern about tipping the scale in one direction or another. I think what we need is a group that can study this, understand it, and come back to us with ideas, recommendations, observations, and that's what I would support. We can do a lot of good, by the way, for our city with the money that we're right now paying into CalPERS. I don't deny that. But we need to figure out what, how we approach this, what is the best way of doing it. And certainly, council has its handful with so many other issues, that I think the establishment of this committee would help in that.
Thank you. Councilmember Broughton?
Hi, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I also support us going ahead and doing something like this, a blue-ribbon panel. I would prefer that terminology, but it doesn't, you know, that's not really the most important thing. So yes, I would like to go ahead and do this. I think all five of us are probably among the three that raised the issue. So I think we've all at one time or another talked about this, so I don't think that we're just three. I think all of us, all of us have an interest in this. As for the, some of the details, you know, the makeup of the committee, I mean, I don't feel strongly about this, but I think of, you know, our bargaining units as being more, you know, advocates, whereas what we're really looking for here is experts to do fact-finding and to bring recommendations, policy recommendations and advice to council. And I don't really think having, you know, representatives of different groups makes sense in that context. But, you know, if, you know, if the rest of my colleagues think it improves the process to have some people from our bargaining units there, I don't think it's a big deal. I just, I just don't think fundamentally that's what this is. This is a fact-finding and not an advocacy type of process here. So I would also suggest, you know, possibly if we didn't have, you know, formal representation from the bargaining units, at least we should have Michelle Flynn and Matt Doyle or their proxies from, you know, finance and HR be there, be at the table to provide advice because they're going to have a lot of the, you know, institutional knowledge that's going to be so important here. So that's all I would say, you know, two members appointed by each council member, I think that seems okay. Alternately, we could each maybe give two names to our city manager and then let our city manager look at the mix and make sure we've got, you know, the right kind of balance between people that know legal issues, people that know finance issues, people that know HR, and maybe come back to us and say, out of these 10 people that you've given me, here are seven that I think would be a really good team. And then just bring it back to us, we can vote collectively on that. I mean, I don't care if I get one and Councilmember Kusaki gets two, it's not, I'm really not thinking about it. And it's very possible that if we each pick two, we'll have some overlap. So we may not end up with 10 by each picking two. So I'm open to something like that. And I think the other, you know, really important thing is going to be the selection of the consultant and the directions that we give to the consultant or the facilitator, whatever we're calling the person. So I definitely would want council to be able to weigh in on that. And, you know, I don't know, maybe set up a subcommittee of council, you know, two people that would look over the selection, the facilitator and the instructions given to the facilitator. And I don't know, maybe you could have another subcommittee of two that looks at the panel selection, something, you know, we can get creative if you want. That's just an idea. But I'm not wed to any of this. I'm pretty open-minded, but I support doing this.
Okay. Now, I have a question first. Is this the statement true? The city in the past 20 years went from a pension surplus of nearly $130 million to an unfunded obligation of nearly $600. That's the, you know, the end part is true because now we have $598,199,000 unfunded obligation. So the last part of it is true. The first part, can you answer about the first part from $130 million? In 20 years, we went to $600 million negative.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, I don't know the exact number, but I do know that we were what PERS considered "super-funded," which meant we had more assets than liabilities.
But if that's true, it means we are going back for at least for the million a year. It's only in 10 years that's going to be another over $400 million.
Well, there were some, there were some things that happened during that 20 years that have pretty much got us to where we're at. There's been investment losses with CalPERS, the enhanced benefits, as Councilmember Najarian mentioned earlier, the demographics of our retirees have changed. Unlike, we're very similar statewide with the percentage of our retirees and compared to our actuals, I mean, compared to our actives. And then CalPERS has changed their contribution policy as well. So there have been some changes along the way that have caused the liability to increase. So yes.
So like in another 10 years, we owe $1 billion unfunded, basically. That will be the trend. If it's not getting worse, that will be the number.
Mr. Mayor, I would hope that that would not be the case.
But how are we going to stop it?
Well, CalPERS has implemented some changes in their contribution policy in the recent years to help cities pay down their unfunded liability more efficiently and quicker. So that their new formulas do help cities get there quicker. It just does cost us more money.
Okay. Now, another issue that I have is with this committee, my worry is, we are getting a person, let's say, who is, who are going to be, I mean, the person whom I have to ask to join this group will be, let's say, an accountant or somebody with finances. He has good knowledge about some finances, but they're not expert in PERS. So then what happened? I can't imagine this group, what is able to do at the long run. I thought maybe we have to hire experts. I mean, here, there is an offer that beside whom I will appoint, there will be three members of employee unions or member of our employees. That's not the purpose. I want to understand what we can do. I mean, if they will get involved with this, then where this is going to? What I thought is to hire experts in PERS to say, although I don't have much of a hope, I guess we got stuck with CalPERS. Okay, let me ask, can we get rid of the CalPERS?
At a cost.
You're the expert.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor, members of council, CalPERS does allow for agencies to terminate from CalPERS. The latest estimates that we have on actuarial basis
Oh, sorry.
...estimate that we would have to pay into CalPERS anywhere from $2 to $2.8 billion to get out. And that would be in a lump sum payment, so it would require some bonding in order to make that payment, but the debt service on that bond would be significant.
Okay. Basically, we are chained. We can't get rid of CalPERS. $2.8 billion, right?
Correct.
And, Mr. Mayor, that's not unique to the City of Glendale, right?
I'm talking about our city. I don't care what they do.
But I just want to, I want to emphasize that it's not unique to Glendale, right? That's the system we're in.
I understand, but I don't want all the time they're telling me how many other cities what they do. That, I'm not representing these other cities. I'm just, okay, I heard you. Other cities have problems too. But it doesn't mean that I have to say that since the others are, they have problems, so let's go ahead with what we are doing. And that's not my point. Anyway, I just, what I have problem with, it's, I was thinking to have a committee or people that they are experts in CalPERS, that we paid to them, and I'm not sure even that will be successful, but at least maybe we hear something from some experts in this matter, not that I go and bring somebody who's CPA. Okay, he's CPA, he is licensed accountant, but what he knows about this CalPERS and other stuff, or I go bring another intelligent person. But I thought maybe we have to hire people and not to get this big group and then employees also have representation there. And they do what? They will come up with a report and we'll be the same thing, we will file and another five years later, if I be here, I don't know, again, we'd say, okay, what we have to do with this CalPERS. At that time, based the way we are going to, our unfunded obligation will be $800 million. So then what? It will be worse than today. So I just want to hear, although I have no hope for this, what we are exercising, but at least few experts in this field, they come in and bring their recommendation or they say, forget it, just continue what you are doing and that's it. I mean, this is me. Anyway, Mr. Golani?
Yeah. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, if that's council's desire, we can certainly do that and we have done it in the past. Unfortunately though, since, as you mentioned, we have to pay these consultants and experts, we have been accused of not being transparent and the whole exercise evolved around an independent body, a third body that has no affiliation with the city, to look into the Pension Review Committee essentially, or a panel to look into our liabilities, all the efforts that we have put into it and all the measures that we have taken into consideration and implemented. So we can certainly bring an expert, we have done it in the past, but I...
When was that?
Do you know, last time that we've done it? Yeah.
At least we learned something. I mean, I don't know this committee, what it's going to do, but if my colleagues, that's their desire, I don't see any hope on this with the committee, we arrange a committee, bring in another committee. Mr. Councilmember Kusaki?
Mr. Mayor, I appreciate what you're saying, but I mean, what I feel is that if there was any expert in the state of California that had a solution to this problem, that was an expert on the CalPERS pension liability issue, they would be a very sought-after individual by every city in California. The Little Hoover Commission, which is a state commission that studies economics and government organization, had experts present a report to them. There is studies done. I think what we're looking, what I'm looking for is a panel of experts from the city, from our own community, that can explore and say, what is right for us? It may not be what, you know, some may suggest on one extreme or the other extreme of the spectrum, but to figure out ways that are reasonable for us to move forward, ways for us, you know, there have been suggestions brought forward from staff in the past, which previous councils have adopted, but it's to explore, what are the other issues? What are the other challenges? And it should not just be the focus on the pensions, but also its impact on staffing and quality of our ability to pay for the things we want to pay for as a city, which is under threat because of this financial sword of Damocles that hangs over us. So I think that in that regard, having studies done doesn't harm anything. In fact, it takes some of the burden off of us for us to be able to focus on other issues, focus partially on the budget, but also have this other working group. And if there is council members that are sitting on this body as well, I would support that idea, whatever it may be, to explore how we can possibly move our city forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other comments?
And I apologize if I'm a little impassioned. I have friends who keep texting me the score of the UCLA-Michigan game. So if I'm speaking fast and I'm a little overly excited, it's because of that.
Thank you. Is there any other comments?
Because UCLA won.
Did they win?
Yes, they did.
The announcement.
Oh, great. Good, good.
Okay, if there is no other comments, so what do we do then? There was five people, Ms. Councilmember Divine?
Yeah, I'm sorry to chime in on this at this late moment, but I'm willing to make this motion, but I think Mr. Broughton, Councilmember Broughton had a good idea. If we each give Mr. Golani two names, then he can sort them through or someone can sort them out so that we have financial, we have auditors and accountants and attorneys and make sure that it's a good mix of our community members that are knowledgeable about this type of issue. So that's kind of my recommendation on this one. Go with nine, seven, did you say? John, did you say seven or nine? Five, six, seven?
The suggestion was somewhere between seven and 11, but yeah. If we go with the two councilmembers, two appointees by each council and the three that was suggested for the employee associations, that'll bring us up to 13.
Well, I didn't mean for the two, in other words, we, like, I might suggest an accountant and an attorney. And then Mr. Councilmember Kusaki might recommend an attorney and an accountant, the same. And some, you know, to make sure that there's a good mix, someone should be there. someone should be there to filter the appointees to this panel.
I don't understand why, what the employees, why employees are getting involved. We are not going to deprive them from something. We just want to understand what's going on with this CalPERS. The employees are, I'm sorry to say, but they are, who are benefiting from CalPERS. So what they're gonna suggest? I don't know. Maybe I'm missing something.
Mayor Agajanian, the intent was that the recommendation that this panel or committee will generate will significantly, might, impact the employee association's standing as far as their members are concerned, so...
No, but they're gonna go against, if they see there is no benefit to them, they're gonna say, hell with it.
I think we should give the employees a little bit more credit. I mean, I appreciate the perspective, Mr. Mayor, but, and it's ultimately up to the council whether or not to include the representatives from those organizations. But I, all of our encounters with organizations have been that they're willing to sit down and listen to whatever the issues are and provide their perspective.
I have not, I'm not against that. It's, eventually it's for employees. But I'm trying to understand what's going on with the CalPERS. Although I have no, I don't see any light on the end of the tunnel and this, whatever we have will be what we have to do. That's me. But since there is some interest to go through this exercise, I would keep it the way it is. But however, since when they brought it up, I will listen to the way they want this to be formed.
Mr. Mayor, another way, based on your concern and question, another way we can do this, we can do it in two phases. If your request is to get a good understanding of how the system works, how PERS, CalPERS works, we can have this committee without the association's involvement look into that aspect of it, bring the report back to council as to their findings without any recommendation, so that council is fully aware of how the system works essentially. And then, return with the inclusion of the associations to look into ways, if there are any, to, so that we can reduce our liability or any other measures that we haven't taken into account over the years and then bring that, those set of recommendations back to council.
I still, I just want to have experts in PERS matter to come and bring their recommendation rather than go through any other exercise. People who are mastering this issue, not those that they heard about it or, you know. I mean, that's me. But anyway, I leave it to the way my colleagues, they want to do it.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Brockman.
Yeah, so, I, just thinking about this a little bit more, I go back to something that Councilmember Najarian started off with, and that's transparency. And I think that's an important part of this. It's fact-finding, it's recommendations, but it's also getting everybody to the extent that's ever possible, getting everybody on the same page. And so, I've kind of changed my mind as I've listened to this discussion, thinking about having some members representing the bargaining units. They will not necessarily bring the expertise on how these, how the system works. But at least being in the room, they will have a better understanding of what our options really are and what the constraints really are, so that they are more realistic. And I think having people in our community that are always telling us to, you know, get out of CalPERS or we're paying too much or, you know, our pensions are too great, having them in there also will, I think, maybe be a bit of a reality check. So, I've, so now that I'm thinking about it, and I don't want to step on Councilmember Divine's toes if she's already made a motion, but what I would recommend is that we do have the three representatives, so to speak. Maybe we each name two people that we think would be appropriate. All those names go to our city manager and our city manager ends up with a list of, let's say, I don't know, what would be a good number in total? Maybe 10 or the 11 or nine, whatever. I mean, I don't think that's, it's that important. But come up with a list that's nicely balanced, that has a range of skills. And then have them, you know, do the work. They're gonna bring in other experts. They're not gonna have all the knowledge. They're gonna bring in other experts and they're gonna help us by distilling this very, very complex information and presenting us with, you know, here's the problem and here are some alternatives that are viable, that are possible for us. And then we'll be able to have, I think, a healthy discussion with the whole community. So that's, that's kind of what I'd put on the table if any of my colleagues are interested in running with that.
Ms. Divine?
That was my motion, was to submit two names, each one of us. Let the city manager sift through them, figure out a good mix of people. And I don't care if staff is in on this. I think probably is a good idea. Hopefully, the person that is the facilitator will have some knowledge. And if not, he can bring in, or he or she can bring in whomever he wants. I think the main idea here with this panel is transparency and having the community involvement that they've always, that I think we've always needed to get their questions finally answered. This is what your fellow community members, your residents have learned and have decided and have kind of, yeah, decided the council, whether we're doing it right or wrong. I mean, that's the whole idea. So that's my motion and...
Okay, I'll second that.
However, I have to add that I think at the end we will come to the point, what we are doing is what we have to do and we're gonna do all these exercises and we'll stay where we are now. So, only the difference will be, we will spend more money. And Mr. Councilmember Kusakian, I guess he wants to add something.
Unfortunately, as much as it pains me, I don't know if I could support the motion that was made and on the floor. Because first of all, the three, we have five employee groups, bargaining units. And I believe that in the spirit of transparency, as Councilmember Najarian said, all of them deserve to be in that room, have a voice. It's gonna be impacting them and they bring a perspective to the individuals who are going to be studying this. We shouldn't be treating our, any of our employees groups as some sort of menace to our city or a fifth column. They are people who are running the city, making the city what it is today. And I think that they all deserve a seat. So how do you pick which three? Sure, safety may be combined into two, but there are varying and sometimes competing needs and wants from each of these labor organizations, as my veteran colleagues know and as we're coming to understand during labor negotiations. Second of all, I mean, if we have five, I think that having the council, the ability to appoint two individuals each, because there are a lot of experts, maybe there is gonna be overlap. But, you know, we're not gonna make a bouillabaisse here where we throw all the ingredients in and let, you know, the city manager then sift through and select which ones he prefers. And I'm sure that he'll do his best, but that also won't be, I think, seen in the most transparent spirit. There is a precedent in this city for large committees, as there was one for the genocide commemorative committee that came about after the flag lowering. I don't want to call it a fiasco, but at this point, when there was this issue and there was a large group that would meet at Fire Station 21, and inevitably, I've been a part of, I was a part of that committee. I think some of the recommendations that came out of that committee still carry to this day. So, I think that is fair. We each can give two names. And, you know, we have a total of 15 people. Not all 15 may be able to make it to every meeting. But again, this will be a group that'll study the issue, that may make recommendations, may come to us and say that there's nothing to recommend. But that would be my comments on this.
However, all, everybody has great recommendation. But I think at the end, after we spend some money, we will comment where we are now and we will continue it. I don't see any way out of this. The way I read the report and I'm looking at it, if we want to get rid of it, we have to spend 2.8 billion? So we don't have that, such a money? So maybe we just continue this. Anyway, is there any motion? Now, it's so confused. I don't see any...
Councilmember Divine made a motion, Mr. Mayor.
But, but, but Mr., I'm sorry, Mr. Kusakian came with some other ideas.
Well, just, yeah, maybe let's just...
Do you want to adjust your motion or it's the same? Or how it goes?
Mr. Mayor, before, I'm sorry.
Yes, Mr. Golani, one second, let me see what...
I apologize, but a call came in just before we started deliberations.
Go to the caller. I'm sorry, we have callers. Caller.
Ms. Valentine, you're live, go ahead.
Yeah, hi. I have a suggestion. Take the scissors, cut the ropes. Let your intent be known to other cities. Government used to have dedicated workers and then they used to leave, others used to leave because they were paid little. And so, more people were coming into work, new, new, new people would come to work. My, at the private business, she cut off my health insurance, my pension. Everything was just stopped. I like to know what law, according to constitution, dictates $2 billion deposit? And who will be getting this deposit? Just to throw it out there. But, Mr. Agajanian, don't worry, 800 million dollars is a drop in the bucket. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I'll see you on a D.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
I mean, nine, eight, bye.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor, really quick question. Thank you.
This is a question directed to staff, to anyone who can answer. It could be Mr. Takhtalian, Mr. Golani or Garcia. Will the size of this committee affect your ability to be able to manage and work it and run it? If it's larger, does that pose a problem or a challenge?
Mr. Mayor, members of city council, Councilmember Kusakian, it should not cause any problems. It may be challenging trying to come up with a convenient time and day for all of them to be able to meet. Other than that, we don't, we don't see a big issue with managing that size of a committee.
Thank you. Ms. Divine, yes, Ms. Divine.
Yes, I would amend my, my motion to coincide with Mr. Kusakian's. And we go ahead and do two appointments, each council member and then a representative from each of the unions.
Is there a second?
I think that's what he suggested.
Is there a second?
I'll second that, unless, Mr. Brockman, I don't...
Yeah, I think it's a little unwieldy, but I'm willing to go at it. So I'll second it.
Okay, roll call, please.
Councilmember Brockman?
Yes.
Divine?
Yes.
Kusakian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
And Mayor Agajanian.
Yes, thank you.
I'm sorry, that was for all three items, right?
We need the appropriation. They were all written to the record.
We need to read it into record.
No, I think they all were. You read the entire item.
I've read the entire.
Yeah, it covers all of them.
So, are we clear now what we are doing? What was it?
Yeah, we're... Yes, since all three items were written to the records, that motion plus the other two items that were part of it, the resolution appropriation.
Okay, if it's clear what we're doing, it's okay.
Yeah.
All right, thank you. Next item, please.
Next item would be AC Management Services regarding ordinance prohibiting the use of polystyrene and single-use plastic in the serving of prepared food at certain city-managed events, city-run concessions and at certain city-sponsored events located on the city-owned or controlled facilities. One ordinance for introduction.
Thank you. Is it then? Mr. Golani?
Yeah, Mayor Agajanian, members of city council, this item was brought to city council back in January for discussion and direction. Staff has prepared, drafted an ordinance for introduction today. And David Jones, our sustainability officer, has a brief presentation and will be seeking additional direction from council.
Mr. Jones?
Good afternoon, good evening, Mr. Mayor and city council. I'm going to share my screen with you right now. And I'll start the presentation. Yes, as the city manager mentioned, at the January 12 city council meeting, council approved a motion for staff to prepare an ordinance prohibiting the use of polystyrene and single-use plastic products. Over the last three months, staff have been preparing the ordinance. This has been a complex process. And has resulted, and as a result of drafting the ordinance, staff are asking the city council for direction on certain aspects of the proposed ordinance. In brief, the ordinance states that all disposable food service ware, food or beverage providers use to serve prepared food and beverages at city events must be marine-degradable. The ordinance shall prohibit the purchase or distribution for city employee-only events and for public, the use of non-marine-degradable food service ware at city events. A food and beverage provider serving food at a city event shall provide marine-degradable disposable straws and utensils upon request only. In drafting the ordinance, we put in the word "non", that needs to be deleted, that was placed in error. Food and beverage providers may dispense plastic straws as an accommodation to people with disabilities where necessary. As drafted, the ordinance is focused on prohibiting the use of non-marine-degradable food service ware at city-managed events, city-run concessions and city-sponsored events at which prepared food is served. In drafting the ordinance, it became clear that who the ordinance will affect, where the ordinance will apply and how the ordinance will be implemented must be thoroughly defined. Clearly, defining what are city-managed events, city-run concessions and city-sponsored events is necessary to ensure the ordinance does not have the unintended consequences, such as applying to persons or events outside direct control of the city. And defining what should be included as a city facility for the purpose of this ordinance is required. For example, should the ordinance apply to an external group or organization who may be using city facilities, such as a city park for fundraising event that serves food? Or should the ordinance apply generically to all city-sponsored events, regardless of the amount or type of sponsorship and regardless of where that event occurs? These are some of the issues for which staff are seeking further direction. Specifically, where the ordinance may apply? What city-owned or controlled facilities should be considered as a city facility for the purpose of this ordinance? As drafted, the ordinance would apply to the city hall campus, fire department facilities, GWP facilities, among others, owned and controlled by the city. But it would also apply to city parks and to city-owned properties leased to third parties, such as Trader Joe's and Montrose and All for Health and Health for All at Cedar House and Pacific Community Center, the Dags Club for America and the American Golf operating at Skull Canyon. Staff are recommending that the ordinance does not apply to city-owned properties, city, sorry, city-leased properties to third parties or to permates. However, the staff, city staff is recommending that the ordinance apply to city licenses using city properties. So this would affect the definition of city facility within the ordinance. Additionally, where the ordinance may apply? Should the ordinance apply to streets and sidewalks? Is it appropriate to include street and sidewalks in the definition of a city-owned or controlled facility? We do obviously own the streets, but we do have control over their activities on them. If you were to include city streets and sidewalks within the ordinance, this would include, for example, Cruz Night, the Montrose Christmas Parade and the Montrose Farmers Market. At this point, I'd just like to remind City Council that there is going to be a second report coming to City Council, looking at prohibiting the use of single-use plastics and polystyrene citywide. At that point, these events that may happen in city walls may be picked up in that additional report. As you know, where the city does sponsor events, some of these are sponsored wholly by the city or in part by the city. So should city-sponsored events be defined as those events that are 100%, funded and supported by the city and entirely located on city-owned or controlled facility? Or may they include events that receive partial funding or support and may be located elsewhere? And finally, staff recommend that where, or in the event that the city is responsible for the purchase of food service wares at any event, that those, that this ordinance applies to those purchasers. There is potentially going to be a fiscal impact for the implementation of this ordinance. On certain products, there is no cost differential between a marine-degradable alternative and compared to the plastic current use. For example, plastic versus wheat straw bowls. Other alternatives like plastic paper straws, there is, there is a significant cost differential. But we'd also recommend that, and to mitigate these cost measures, utensils and straws would be requested, be only given upon request. And we'd also undertake a large education campaign to whoever was impacted by this ordinance. And that education campaign would identify where people can purchase marine-degradable alternatives to single-use plastics. So we would assist all those organizations that would be impacted by this ordinance. And finally, alternatives. City Council may direct staff to prepare the ordinance prohibiting the use of polystyrene and single-use plastics just at city-managed events and city-run concessions, on city-owned or controlled properties, excluding leased properties and permittees. Council may direct staff not to consider the ordinance as drafted until staff have completed the staff report determining the feasibility of prohibiting the use of polystyrene and single-use plastics into food beverage providers within Glendale city limits. And council may consider any other alternative, not presented by staff at this time. And that being said, myself and Jillian are available for any questions that you may have.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you very much for the report.
You're welcome, Mr. Mayor.
Is there any question from staff?
Yeah, I have some questions.
Yes, Councilmember Brot.
Questions and comments. So the first one is something I brought up in, in our briefings yesterday about a line in the third whereas in our ordinance that says plastics are generally recyclable. We know that plastics are not generally recyclable. I understand the intent of that originally, but I asked if we could reword that, and did we get that fixed?
We will be rewording that. We will be taking out, although plastics are generally recyclable. And so currently, there's limited capacity. So yes, we will be, once we bring the ordinance back for introduction, that will be corrected.
Okay. I, I think it's, it's, it's important because, you know, we've been living under this lie for many, many years that plastics are recyclable. And we know that very few types of plastics are actually recyclable. And something like, I forget the number now, but it's below 10% that are actually recycled. So it is an important point that we're, we're not participating in the big lie. The other thing I wanted to check on this definition of marine, what are you calling it? Marine degradable, right?
Correct, yes, sir.
I, I have something, maybe Aram, could you pull up the, the first link of the three I gave you? This is from Santa Monica, they, which, which, which I know you've studied and, and this kind of shows how they're explaining their ban. And they have a, a ban citywide. And they, I think they do use the term marine degradable, but they, they are careful to, to provide details of what is allowed and what is not allowed. And I just thought it would be good to just show that because I believe, you know, we need to do the same thing. Well, this is, okay, this is one of the ones I gave you. I think this is the third one. That's fine, you can put that one up.
Okay.
Could you put that back?
Sure, give me a second. Do you see it?
Right, yeah. So, yeah, so you see what they've done is they've kind of spelled out what is, you know, what is allowed and what is not. And they have the items at the bottom that are banned. So I would, I would, you know, like us to do that. I, and I assume you were, you were already thinking along those lines. But I, I do want to note, though, that they show utensils like straws and, and, you know, they have that wooden fork there. They have chopsticks. They also, whoops, I just, it just went off the screen. Okay, there, you're reformatting it.
Yeah, go ahead.
I think they also show cup lids and as being, you know, something that's available in this marine-degradable form. They, I think, had originally included them, and then they exempted them because the products weren't quite there. But now, as of January 1st, 2020, they are including them in their ordinance. So we had this discussion, and I was getting the impression from you that you didn't think those products were available. But it seems Santa Monica is saying they are. So if, if you could perhaps dig into that a little bit more. I, I don't want us making exceptions where we allow plastic hot coffee cup lids or plastic straws or plastic utensils because we're saying they're not commercially available because it looks like they are. I'm okay with the exception for people with disabilities. But I think beyond that, we should not allow exceptions for, for any of these items.
No, I agree. Where, where the items, where the products do come online, yes, we would expect those products to be part of the ordinance.
Okay, and we should spell that because I think these products, you know, I mean, you'll, I'm sure want to do due diligence, but I think, you know, we can see Santa Monica is, has concluded that these products are commercially available. So we should just make sure that if we agree, we're, we're spelling that out. And if we don't agree, I'd, I'd be interested in hearing why. So anyway, I just, I wanted to run through that. Aram, if you could click on the first of the links. It's similar, but it just.
Would it be this one?
Spells it out. If you, yeah, this one, I think it is, you know, where they just, basically, they spell out, you know, they say, "The rules require food establishments to distribute food and beverages with marine-degradable foodware, permitted materials included." So they spell it all out, that they are prohibiting plastics 1 through 6, also bioplastics. And they mention this, you see PLA. And PLA is, if I'm not mistaken, I forget exactly what that stands for, even though I was just told. But PLA lining is some kind of a product, it's, it's a resin made from cornstarch, and it's applied to a lot of these products just so that they hold up better. I guess they hold liquids better, I'm not quite sure what. But my understanding is that those make it very difficult to, to compost. And so Pat, Santa Monica is specifically calling out that those are not allowed. And I would, I would request that we do the same. And, and perhaps you had already had that in there, but I'm just pointing that out. If you could look at that. That's, you know, in, in the, in the ordinance, you talk about food for personal use, people bringing in their own meals, you know, and we're not going to necessarily police that. But I think management, you know, outside of this ordinance, management should really be encouraging reuse. And I want to, and I want to get to the point of reuse because ultimately, that's where we need to go, right? What we're doing here is we're replacing one bad thing for another, maybe somewhat less bad thing, right? Right now, plastics go into the landfill. These other throwaway items, I mean, unless we have a way to collect them and compost them, and I don't know that we do today, I think they are going to end up going into the landfill as well. They'll break down faster than plastic, but it's still not a good thing. If we do have the, the capability of collecting and composting these materials, and that's a step, that's a, that's a step in a, in a positive direction. But I don't know if we're really, to the extent we're going to be able to, to do that. And maybe staff can address that. But, you know, the, I think the ultimate place we want to get to is not having these throwaway items, having more and more reuse. So what I would like to see is, like, following this ordinance, we move on, as you said, to look at a citywide ban. And, and, and I'm all for that. I like the idea that we're going to walk the walk first as a city, get the experience, and then ask everybody else to do it once we've done it. So that, I'm cool with that. But I would, I would like to see that, you know, as soon as possible, we start looking at the next stage in the evolution of this, which is what can we do to start eliminating single-use items entirely? You know, what can we do to get more and more reuse? Zero waste is the ultimate solution. So I, I want to put that out there, so that's on the horizon. So those are my, my, most of my comments. As far as, you know, the things you want us to discuss, again, I think the basic principle is we walk the walk. So I'm okay not applying this to, you know, Trader Joe's, the Dads Club, and these other organizations, or, you know, the duck race that's, that's on, you know, on Verdugo Park, or a wedding. I, I'm, I'm okay with that. If it's something that the city is sponsoring financially or running, like I think Cruise Night, right? Then I think we should be, if we're in the driver's seat, then we should apply this. If we're not in the driver's seat, we should, I think it's fair to wait and to roll that into the second phase. So sorry for going on so long, I had a lot.
No, that's great.
But I just wanted to get it all out. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. One more thing, sorry, before I end. The whole question of hardship exemptions, and that's in one of the, I, I don't need Aram to bring it up, but Santa Monica has a process for hardship exemptions where if you want to ask for a hardship exemption, you have to actually fill out a form and get it approved, probably by the city manager. And I, I want, I don't want people just being able to, to self, you know, determine that they're, they, they don't have to do it because there's hardship. I want them to have to get permission from the city management. And I would like to see if, if, if there are a lot of these cases coming forward that council gets updated. The experience of Pasadena with their styrofoam ban is that very few exceptions were actually requested. It was a lot less than anyone expected. So my expectation here would be, we probably don't see a lot of them. But I want to make sure there's, there's a process and, and we're tracking it. So now I'm really done.
Thank you. Is there any other comment? Okay. So what do we want to do now? Do you, Mr. Jones, thank you for the report.
You're welcome, Mr. Mayor.
What do you expect from us now?
Any comments, Aram?
Do you have questions to be asked?
So the item before you, Mr. Mayor, is to introduce the ordinance, and I think there was just, it needs to be introduced. And council, there was, I think, a couple of items that we need direction on in, in introducing that ordinance. So when staff brings it back, those, those comments are incorporated, and they were as, as described by Mr. Jones in his presentation.
Yeah, I'd like to introduce the ordinance and accept staff's recommendations. I think the, the last one about city-sponsored events was, was open, looking for council direction. I would say if there's anything, any event that the city is funding or sponsoring in any way, it probably should be included, but I'll defer to staff on that.
Say, when you say "anyway," like 100%?
Well, I mean, I guess the basic principle is if we're in the driver's seat.
Right, right.
Then it should be in, and if we're not in the driver's seat, it should wait till the second, second phase of this. So I don't know how you, how you think the best way is to handle it.
We will do that.
I, I think that if, if for any event where the city is a majority financial sponsor or is funding more than half of it, then that should be the case. But I do think that, you know, leave that for tier two. I do like this lead-by-exemple approach, and it's one that I advocate for. We should never ask our residents and businesses to do something that we're not willing to do ourselves. And additionally, I would say that in terms of, you know, the, I think there was the issue regarding what sidewalks are considered. I, I am not ready to make a decision on that. I want to see how this works out with the first phase and implementation across our city facilities. And then once we have a handle on it, we know what expenses are, what impacts will be, we can then roll it out and become. And ultimately, our goal is to, to get rid of all of these harmful plastics that do end up in the ocean, that end up outside in, in the environment and don't biodegrade. That is the goal, but let's first start with our own facilities.
Okay, where we say staff is recommending that the ordinance not apply to city-owned property leased to third parties. So we have no problem with that. We want to go ahead with it. Nobody said anything about this.
And then if I heard correctly, it would be at city-sponsored events at, at city facilities. For this version, we wouldn't be including streets and sidewalks that might come back in a future iteration. Is that correct? I think that's what I heard from Councilmember Kasakian. I think if.
Yes, Mr. Kasakian.
Yes, yes.
All right.
Can you clarify, like for Cruise Night, for instance?
Well, Cruise Night is a city-sponsored, I mean, we got, we pay for that, that's the city's event.
So that would be in?
Yes.
Okay, but the farmer's market would not, right?
Yeah, let's, let's, maybe I can have Jillian clarify because I think there's a couple of concepts here that we have to work through.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Brotman, thank you. We do sponsor Cruise Night, and, and that would be in. That's a majority sponsorship, although that is on, that is on Grand Boulevard. Whereas we don't have majority sponsorship of the Harvest Market, for example, and which occurs on Honolulu, so that would be out. Then there are questions for other events, of course, like the Montrose Christmas Parade. I'm not sure if we're 100% or 50% or a majority sponsor of that event, that would be something that would have to be reviewed, but we do have sponsorship there. This is why the larger issue of whether or not the sidewalks and the street should be included came up because we have, where do you, where do you draw the line?
Right.
You know, do you just say wherever it is that the city has a majority sponsorship, and so be it? That might be an easier way to handle it. And, and why we wanted to bring it to your attention because it does have implications where one is in and one is out, even though they seem like they're both city events.
This is getting complicated now.
Yes.
Ms. Devine.
Yes, thank you, thank you. I think the ordinance should read for city facilities and events, and events at city facilities. I think streets and sidewalks, I think we should leave those out until we go citywide. What about enforcement? I mean, how would we ever enforce that? And I think when the city is responsible for the utensils, like if we are providing the food for an event, then we should provide the, the correct utensils. So I'm for alternative one with those exceptions. And I also think that we should really start a campaign of bring your own. I love the idea, LA is doing it, I think it's possible. Our staff is brilliant at, at campaigns like this. This could be a, a real change, directional change in our city. That's, those are my comments, Mayor.
Thank you. Is there any other comment? Or we are done with this? Okay, Mr. Garcia, you guys have enough information?
I would guess I would look to Mr. Jones and Ms. Van Byn if they feel comfortable. Well, it's been introduced, and so we'll bring it back with those, with those changes.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Yes, thank you.
We're good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item, please. Next item, please.
Public Works Regarding Acceptance of Grant Funds From The Californian Department Transportation For The 2020, 2021 Low Carbon Transit Operations Program. One motion approving the acceptance of grant funds in the amount of $59,095 from the Californian Department Transportation for the 2020, 2021 Low Carbon Transit Operations Program and authorizing the city manager or designated to execute all agreements, certifications, and documents necessary to accept and implement the funds. Two, resolution authorizing the execution of the certifications and assurances and authorized agent forms for the Low Carbon Transit Operations Program for the following project, electric bus charging infrastructure.
Thank you, Mr. Gulani.
Mayor Agajanian, members of city council, I'm just going to turn it over to Yazdan Imraney, our Director of Public Works, for a brief presentation on the acceptance of this grant from Caltrans.
Mr. Imraney.
Thank you very much. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of city council. This is a grant that the city had applied for, and we are very happy that we've, we are receiving it. It was a grant that was created for, as part of a transit affordable housing and sustainable communities program. And also, this provides operational and capital assistance for transit agencies to reduce greenhouse gas emissions and improve mobility. So as a tier-two transit operator, which is what Glendale Beeline is, we have submitted these reports, and what we're hoping to use these funds for is to bank them essentially for purchase of essentially chargers, electric chargers for our buses. As you know, we are actively looking to complete our feasibility study for our buses in terms of moving to an all-electric fleet, and this would be a component of that in terms of providing some initial capital, if you will, for the purchase of the, the chargers. And as part of this, we are also going to look at changing our, our application with Metro for a grant to change it from purchasing five CNG, CNG-powered buses to battery electric buses. But again, this grant is strictly for purchasing electric bus chargers. So it would be a pretty good start with, for us, and with that, be happy to answer any questions.
If we do, oh, Ms., Ms. Devine.
Yes, thank you. Where would these bus chargers go? Are they going to be located down at the center, the transportation facility?
Uh, Councilmember Devine, yes, this would be at our new Glendale Beeline facility.
Mr. Gulani, do you recall whenever we were building that, and I asked about electric buses? And was like, oh, well, that's not going to be for the way in the future, and we'll think about that later. So now we're putting in the chargers? And we'll be able to, once we get these electric buses, we'll be able to maintain them?
Uh, yes, that is correct.
Okay, great, great. I'll, I'll move the item.
Is there a second?
Mayor, before we move it...
I'll second it, but I, I want to just make a quick comment.
Please.
Uh, yeah, I just want to thank Mr. Imraney and Public Works for, you know, the, the idea of changing the programming of those Metro dollars from CNG to electric buses. I didn't realize you had that up your sleeve, and when I read that, it brought a smile to my face. So thank you for doing that.
Of course, thank you.
Okay. Is there a second?
Yeah, I seconded.
All right, the roll call, please.
Councilmember Brotman?
Yes.
Devine? Kasakian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Mayor Agajanian?
Yes. What's next, please, Mr.?
Nine would-be hearings, nine-day community development regarding appeal of design review boards, denial of DRB case number PDR 1709694-C located at 910 Lair Drive, one motion to reverse the design review board's decision and improve the project, two motion to sustain the design review board's decision to deny the project. Mayor, at this time, I have three callers waiting on the line.
Okay. At first, before I go to callers, this is only about Chevy Chase and to do with the drain, I guess, the drain around that property. Am I right, Mr. City Attorney?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, so as was noted, the, the council already held a public hearing on the desire, opened the public hearing and took evidence. So you are, as the chair, you have the discretion to limit this particular discussion to the issue for which you continued it, was, which is to train, receive some information on the drainage. That's correct.
Drainage, okay.
So I would just note that you have, I think the applicant is on WebEx. You should, you should go to her first and then take any callers.
Okay.
After the staff presentation.
All right. Is the applicant here? Appellant also here? Mr. Monroe is here?
Yeah, I think the applicant and the appellant are the same, same people, because it's, it's, it's appellate-driven appeal.
All right, so each, I give 10 minutes? Is that enough?
Mayor, could we, yeah, I apologize. Could we have Mr. Roger Kiesel, our senior planner, make a presentation?
All right.
On this item before we turn it over to them.
Okay. Let's go to...
Thank you. Let me share my screen.
Mr. Roger Kiesel, okay. Yes, I'm listening. We are listening.
Okay. Can you all see the screen?
Yes.
Okay, great.
I can see it.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. The hearing before you this evening is a continuation of the design review board's denial of a new single-family house located at 910 Lair Drive. You all heard this, this project last year on May, on October 20th, where you continued the item pending further information on grading and drainage. And let me just give you a brief overview of the project. So the project proposal is a new three-story, single-family residence with an attached two-car garage. The house is about 3,275 square feet. The lot on which the proposed house is located is approximately 8,100 square feet, 1,000 square feet, and is zoned R1R with a floor area ratio District 2. The lot has frontage on both Lair Drive as well as East Chevy Chase. The next slide, the location map shows the sub-sited orange. It's located south of Chevy Chase Drive here, and the Lair Drive right here is a sub-street. The frontage of the subject site is at the end of this stuff. Real quickly, whoops, I'm sorry. This is, this aerial slide shows basically a rough outline of the project site. Very brief history of the project. In August 2016, the DRB returned the project for redesign, December 14th, 2017. The DRB did the same, and April 12th, 2018, they also did the same. Finally, January 10th, 2019, they denied the project. The applicant filed an appeal a couple weeks later, and you all heard it again on August 20th, 2020, where you continued the item pending drainage and grading information. Again, this is an outline of the site here in red. The approximate location of the house is in green, and the driveway is in brown. I will say this, this part of the driveway over here is not what's proposed now. I just put it in just for, for, you know, reference purposes. Okay, the west elevation of the house faces both streets and the adjacent residences along East Chevy Chase. The east elevation is at the rear of the house, which backs up to the upslope of the The north elevation faces the lot's frontage to Chevy Chase Drive. And then finally, the south elevation of the residence is really the main elevation, and what you would see as you approach the house from Laird and the driveway. So a summary of the October 20th, 2020 council meeting, council, the majority of council was satisfied with the design of the project. They also, council was also most concerned about the drainage and grading of the project. So in the end, council voted four to one to continue the hearing pending information to resolve the drainage concerns. Specifically, the council expressed concerns with regard to grading and drainage in that it should not adversely impact the adjacent neighbor, and that water flow on the subject site needs to be properly directed to the street and not onto adjacent properties. As a result, the applicant engaged in, engaged a firm advanced engineering and consulting to perform an updated hydrology study for the subject site. The study concluded that all the flow from the project would be conveyed to East Chevy Chase Drive, and that construction of the proposed driveway on the subject site will not have an impact on the flow to Lair. The Public Works Department has reviewed and accepts the findings in this submitted hydrology study for the project, and that was an attachment to this report. So finally, to conclude, staff recommends that the city council reverse the design review board's denial decision based on the findings contained in the staff report, including consistent reductions in the size of the house and the garage, the relocation of the house lower in elevation and closer to Laird, location of the garage on the existing driveway cut to prevent access to this area, and then finally, the restoration and re-landscaping of the existing driveway. So that concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Kiesel. Is there any, is there, okay, is the applicant, we start with applicant, I guess. Is Elizabeth Iran, Iran?
Hi.
You want to start first?
Um, yes, I, I think so. So, good evening, honored city councils, community stakeholders, and mayor. So I think that Roger has summarized our case, the case before you well. There were concerns that were brought up in the previous hearing, and the hydrology studies studied a 50-year rain event because there are large flows coming from the canyons beyond our property. Now, the way our houses position and the topography of our lot don't really affect, and it has been borne out in the study that was provided by Mr. Silverman, who I would like to have you have to speak briefly to discuss the particulars of his findings of this report. But what it concluded was, under the coordination of Mr. Hitty from the Bureau of Engineering, we walked the site, we looked over the plans, he, we created a document that clearly, in very good detail, discussed the flows of water in this area. There were many cross-sections that were looked at. We looked at the property adjacent to us at 3480 Chevy Chase, where actually, the way that property is situated or formulated, most of the water flows from the canyons beyond cross that property. That particular neighbor has done a lot of landscaping, which channeled the flows from the canyon beyond, and they actually redirected it slightly toward our driveway. But what was found in the hydrology study is that regardless, the impact of, of allowing those flows to be channeled toward Lair Drive, where they can be mitigated in a large rain event, would not be affected by our proposed project. And I think that it's, if you have any more detail that you want to look at from the hydrology study, I think David Silverman should weigh in briefly. He's here on the call. Also, I would like to just mention that the, the restoration of the existing driveway along, beyond our garage was proposed in the last presentation. And we, we, I walked out with Mr. Hitty also when we were at the site discussing the hydrology study. And I think that we presented some bench-fill solutions with landscaping and grading that satisfied him, and I think that it was addressed very thoroughly in our last presentation. And finally, I think that a lot of the information that has been presented by our opposing neighbors, unfortunately, has distorted the record. And I did make a presentation discussing the nature of the lot when it was obtained by Mr. Monroe, and how he has maintained the lot but did not place fill, but only placed maybe topsoil with planting. And as pointed out by the civil engineer, if any fill was placed in this area of our entrance to Lair Drive, it would wash away. So there was no fill placed by our client, and a lot of these accusations are not founded in fact. So I just wanted to make sure that the record was clarified. And finally, I hope after a nine-year effort, me being the third architect, I think Mr. Kiesel being at least the third staff member, all of the staff members, and I think his summation didn't include an earlier presentation for a conditional use permit by yet another architect. It would be, I would hope that you would find that Mr. Monroe can build his family house. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I, can, can we have David, well, maybe David Silverman present the findings of the hydrology report since that was the major concern in our last hearing?
Okay. Mr., I mean, if you're done, I want to go to Mr. Monroe and see how he's presenting the case. Mr. Monroe?
Yes, good evening, Mayor, Mr. Yeah. The council members are not so doing.
Hello, Mr. Mayor.
It's late. Speechless, you know, I'm here today, still trying to obtain a house for my family. Okay, so it's, I'm glad to see everybody here that was at the last meeting and all the effort we have made over the past six months to bring this report, a favorable report, in order for us to finally get out the house that we've been dreaming about for the past eight, nine years. We love Glendale, and we moved here about 12 years ago. We love it so much. Just after we moved here, we purchased this land to build a house for the family, and we have been trying very, very hard. And the situation is, unfortunately, a neighbor in front wanted to purchase this property, and he's very well aware of all the story of that land, because he wanted to buy it, and there was problem, a mudflow problem before. And then later on, he thought nobody would buy it, and we bought the property, and it was already graded. And he had made a lot of accusation, and he's still doing that. But I don't want to go too much, take anybody's time, but I feel that we have fulfilled what the, what the council and the mayor want us to do, and I think that's been done. We spent quite a bit of money overall, and still, we just spent quite a bit of money to... And still, we just spent quite a bit of money to prepare this report. So we want to thank everybody to spend their time to listen to us. And I hope that tonight would be a very good night for me, my daughter and my wife.
Okay, thank you. Is there anything else you guys want to express about?
I just think that Ms. Herron suggested or requested that the council be able to hear from their hydrology, the engineer.
Is the expert here? Is the expert?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, go ahead. What's your name, sir?
David Silverman.
I didn't get David?
I'm just going to give a.
All right, David. What's the last name?
Just a quick.
What's your last name?
Silverman.
Silverman?
Silverman, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't know why it doesn't show up on this.
It says David.
I just want to show a couple of things. All right, does everybody see this?
Yes.
So this is a map of the, this is a map of what's draining onto the property. I don't know. Does everybody still see it?
Yes.
Okay, because I just see one person. So it's a 32 acre, almost a 32-acre area that's draining down to Laird Drive, which is here. And this little area here is just where he wants to put the house. And the development, the amount of more impervious area that's going to be developed is a little bit more than half a percent of the total drainage area. So the development itself isn't going to increase any flow off the, into Laird Drive than what's going there now. It's a very small development compared to the size of the area that's draining. So we did a study. Here we are. Going every 10 feet up the canyon from Laird Drive, I don't know, this is a little bit hard to see, but these little green lines are where we actually did our study. So every 10 feet, we went up this canyon to see how big the water flow would be stretching out across the property. And the blue line is where the water, the water surface extends to. You see, most of the canyon, it comes down and doesn't flood outside the canyon until we get down near where the houses are. And as you can see, if it's this line here, this curved line, and then this straight line is the property line for our project, which is going to go here, and then neighbor's property on the other side. And you can see that based on our study, the water stays in the canyon and stays pretty much off of our property until we actually get down to the driveway down by Laird. And Laird ends right around here. So you can see that most of the flooding, anything that happens for the 50-year storm gets affected, affects the neighbor's property more than us. And it has nothing to do with anything that we're doing. This is what the conditions are right now. And the last thing I just want to say. So this is the driveway at the Laird Drive, so this is Laird over here. And this is our proposed driveway grades. And if you look here, this is the property line. The water is not extending up onto this driveway. And we're basically, all we're doing in our grading is smoothing out the existing driveway by keeping the same grade. So since the water's not extending up onto this driveway now, our development will have zero impact on what's going on with the water coming down the canyon. Because we are not touching the area where that water's touching. I think that's just the very, the summary, the simplest summary that I can give. Does anybody have any questions?
No. Can you show on this map where the Laird is? Show me the Laird.
Uh, yeah, sorry. This is, this is Laird here.
I see.
This is where the end of Peyton's did. Yeah.
All right.
So our driveway is coming down and connecting to Laird at our property line.
Based on your presentation, so the rainwater is not going to the neighborhood's lot?
It is, but it has nothing to do with our project.
Oh.
Nothing we're doing is affecting the water as it's going now. It's going where it's going now. We're going to build the project and we are not touching anything that will affect how the water goes right now.
I see. So you're not put, you don't have any impact on the flow of water?
No.
All right.
Nothing we're doing is impacting what's going on right now or in the future.
Okay. You want to speak about the maps you have provided? Is there anything in there that you want to talk about? On this?
Which maps?
Where you say, hold on. You know, you presented water surface limits and then goes to.
I mean, the report has a lot more detailed information where, you know, at every one of those cross-sections, every 10 feet, there's, you know, details of where the water is going. But it's hard to understand in a setting like this.
Okay, you're showing where the water is going to go, right, on those plans
Right.
that you provided, which has nothing to do with the next door neighbor? Far from them.
Well, all right, so this is the property line right here.
Uh huh.
And this is Laird. And this is our driveway. We're not touching our driveway. And you can see that the floodwaters, you know, come down and they don't get into our property. Here is the closest it comes to coming onto our driveway. And then once we get down by where Laird is and it's flat, all the water drains out onto Laird and then down the street to Chevy Chase. But our driveway work is here and we're not doing anything that affects the water coming down the canyon. This water is coming down the canyon never touches our property until it gets down through the flat part by Laird.
All right, thank you. Is there any question from?
Question.
Yeah, I have a question.
Yes. Mr. Button?
Oh, yeah, my question is, so I understand you're saying that nothing you're going to be doing prospectively is going to affect the flooding situation. But I thought that the discussion earlier was about the work, the illegal grading, regardless of who did it, but the illegal grading was having an effect. Are you saying that is also not?
Nothing that was done on this property is affecting this at any time, unless it was done, you know, 40 years ago, I don't know. But nothing on this property right now affects the grading that was done by Mr. Monroe in the years that he's owned. He's done nothing that affects this. And we have pictures that show how the property was before he bought it, to show that he's done minor things, you know, to clean the ground up so he can drive on it. And you planted plants, but he's done no grading on the property that affects the drainage.
Okay. Is there any other?
Question.
Yeah, Mr. Najah.
Question.
Mr. Najah.
So, thank you. So I think when we first heard this case, one of the concerns was not so much the water coming down the canyon itself, but the water coming down the driveway. I don't know if we can, we can point to it on your thing, but that flow wouldn't be able to make the, the turn, if you will, on Laird that it would flow into the neighbor's property. So what are, what are your opinions on the flow coming down that driveway affecting the adjacent property?
All right, so coming down, here's the driveway here. That's our, that's our driveway.
Right.
And you can see the blue lines. These blue lines show the extent of the water. So anything coming down our driveway, you can see that it barely goes into the neighbor's property, but that's this water that's coming out here is coming in and then turning into their property. So this is all getting into the driveway and then going out onto Laird. But this is what the study shows, that the water is going to come down through the neighbor's property, then it is going to turn onto our driveway near the bottom, and it's all going to flow out down into Laird. And it's mostly outside of the neighbor's property once it gets on the driveway. Because it's just barely into the neighbor's property.
Is Laird improved? Does Laird have gutters on it? Do we know that? A curbs? I mean, does it have curbs?
Huge storm drain.
And the storm drain at the end of it, a big storm drain.
On both sides.
Okay, thank you.
Did you, did you, I mean, the geologist, did you say the rain drain comes from neighborhood driver to Laird? From neighborhood property to Laird?
The water's coming down the canyon on the neighbor's property.
Oh.
So if you were to connect the ends of all these blue lines, that would be the limits of the water coming down. And then once it gets close to Laird in our driveway, whoops.
No, I'm just trying to understand if.
Turns and goes on to the driveway.
So, so from neighbor's property, rainwater is coming toward Laird, not from this property, the, Mr. Monroe's property going to the neighbor's lot?
Right. Most of this property is actually, I believe, city property up in the hillside, not the neighbor's property. Most of the water, I think, comes from city property.
Okay.
And just a little of it comes from the neighbor, but it goes through the neighbor's property.
All right, thank you. Is there any other question from my council colleagues?
Just one other thing, sorry. But here, you can see there's a big catch basin, it's a, you know, has a grate on it. So there's a big.
On Laird? On Laird?
On Laird, yeah.
Oh.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, I have a question.
Yes, Ms. Councilmember Devine?
Yes, Mr. Silverman. On this drawing, if you will, go back to the full, the full drawing where you show the canyon, right there, right there. Now, you mentioned when you, when you were speaking, and this is the problem right here. You mentioned that when the water flows down from the canyon, it reaches a point where it flows into, there is an exit because the neighbors have put like a channel there to, so that there is an exit. You mentioned that. You said there is an exit for the water, correct?
Yeah.
You're planning on building a wall. This is the problem. If you block, are you going to block that exit?
No.
If you're blocking that exit with a wall, then there's a problem.
But we're not.
What are you doing right there? What's happening right there?
All right, so two things. The water itself, we, oh, sorry, this is actually an old plan, but the water, we're putting a gate.
You're putting a gate below the exit. You're putting a wall all the way from the top of this, this hill beside.
We're putting a gate. See where this line is here?
I'm just, I'm just looking at your plans, okay?
Which plan?
And the wall that you're planning.
This is where the wall is. I mean, this is where the gate is here. The water starts coming onto Laird at the gate. So according to our calculations, see this, see this line right here? Yes. See this line right here? Do you see this line right here?
Yes.
That's where the water is. That's where the water turns onto Laird. That's the edge of the water. Our gate is beyond that. Our wall is beyond that. We're not doing anything in the area where the water's flowing onto the driveway.
Okay. All right.
We designed it that way.
I didn't, I was out, you know, I've been out there many times as well, and I just don't, didn't see it that way. It seemed that the gate.
We changed our design to make sure it stayed out of that area.
Okay. Is there any other question from Mr. Silverman? Okay.
And I would just like to interject that.
Yes.
It's crucial to our interests and the interests of this project that, in fact, we don't impede the flows of these waters. So I think it would be important to put language in your overturning of the appeal that would guarantee that, you know, we don't impede these flows and that it's to the satisfaction of, of city engineer.
We're, we're thinking on the same line.
Sounds good.
Okay.
Okay, any, if there is no question, anybody wants to move this project? Number one, motion to reverse the design review.
We have six callers.
No, I have comments to make.
Okay, comments, let's go to the.
We also have six callers.
Oh, we have callers. Ms. Devine, let's, let me go to the callers. Yes.
Mayor, how many minutes would you like to give them? Three minutes each?
Three minutes.
Darren Rohan, you're live, Darren, go ahead.
Yes, good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Darren Rohan. I have lived at 2,500 East Chevy Chase Drive for over 16 years. The proposed project should be denied for the following reason. Per Los Angeles County Regional Planning of Land Development on Los Angeles County Public Works, this land is unbuildable. Usable square space is 4,006. Please see Attachment Number One to the letter that I committed to you. The other reason for denying this project is potentially dangerous alteration. There has already been unpermitted grading and destruction to the hillside by the applicant. The applicant developer illegally created the driveway which continues to degrade and erode the hillside. More importantly, the hillside is designated as a landslide, landslide hazard zone, which is in and of itself reason to be alarmed. My home sit, my home sits directly beneath the subject site and flow control through the site during previous rainstorm were shown to be deficient and will likely worsen exponentially due to the addition of an excessively large structure. One can only imagine what such a large footprint would have on a landform that is already deemed a landslide hazard zone. The scale, the proposed size of the home does not conform with the design goal and compatibility with surrounding homes. There is a degree of size associated with this design that is not in line with the neighborhood neighboring home. It fails to preserve the natural terrain and maintain safety in the environment. Compromise privacy, the proposed height and the, on the hill, and the proximity to the neighboring homes will naturally compromise neighbor's privacy. This applicant has never demonstrated sincere desire to maintain the neighborhood's compatibility by conforming to the code, the government hillside project, and should be prevented from building a house in the wrong place in a way that endangers neighbors and violates their privacy. Developer lack good faith and character. The applicant was cited in order to restore the topography and never did so. He has repeatedly demonstrated his disdain for the rules and continues to reject any of the rules and regulations of the development process. The applicant is not looking to build his first home. He's a builder with many homes under his belt. Three of them that I know of, they are located in Lincoln Heights and sold already. In the last meeting, Mr. Mayor, you emphasized how sorry you are for Mr. Monroe not being able to build his dream house. However, the truth is, he wants to build another house for a profit on the plans of the neighbor.
Mr. Roman.
The rules and regulations should be applied to everyone regardless where they are coming from without any excuses. And thank you to DRB for doing a great job.
Thank you, Mr. Roman. Next caller, please. How many callers we have now?
Ms. Valentine, we have another five more, sir.
So maybe you make it two minutes.
Hello?
Yeah. Ms. Valentine, go ahead. You have two minutes.
Yes, good evening. Now, the architect.
Now, the architect, she went over the last meeting, and she was allowed to do that. Mr. Monroe was allowed to rehash his grading for the last meeting. So I think it would be fair if you allow us to ask to throw out the last meeting that took place, including Mr. Kiesel. He, dear council members, you remember how he misrepresented to you that this was Laird Street, that had Glendale, Laird Street, that had two homes on it? Doesn't that ma, doesn't that make you wonder what's going on? Also, he presented the overview. I like to present overview, and I have couple of concerns. And Mr. Silverman, he presented a shoddy, shoddy report. I'm very happy to learn about this land that Glendale owns. Finally, call it by its name, Laird Canyon. Laird Canyon has no street. It ends in terminus with humongous, huge channels on, at the corner of Laird and Chevy Chase. The only purpose for those channels is to collect the water. The water does not flow to Chevy Chase, according to Silverman. This report is really, really shoddy, except for that introduction. Then, everything is questionable that was presented on this project. The project has no street to stand on. The street is 2,512 Chevy Chase, 104 linear feet of frontage. That picture has not been presented.
Ms., Ms. Valentine.
You have to deny this project. I'm, I'm supporting the neighbor, please. And don't let this beautiful, oh, I have to say about the house, predictability, it wasn't the design review board that, that's wrong.
Ms. Valentine, your time is up. And I let you to speak another third...
Also, please, don't let this beautiful...
All right, Ms. Valentine, thank you very much. Thank you, Ms. Valentine. Next caller, please.
Lou Fabiano, Lou, you're live, go ahead. Lou?
Ms...
Lou Fabiano?
Lou Fabiano?
Lou? Mayor, I can put him on hold and go on.
Yes, next one.
Mark Strunen, Mark, you're live, Mark?
Mark?
Yes, hi, this is Mark Strunen. Am I being heard?
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you very much. Thank you for taking my call, council. I am a neighbor at 2,465 Chevy Chase. He's Chevy Chase. I can see the Laird property across the street. I'm familiar with the area where this, where the house is proposed to be built. I am most concerned that the ultimate result here is that, in the case of serious flooding, which I have seen, I'm a resident for 21 years at this location. I have seen water come down from the hills into the, into Laird and then make the turn, bringing mud and debris on to Chevy Chase. It affected a automobile that I had out in front the last time that that happened. And I just want to make sure that the decision that the council makes supports the safety of our neighborhood and that I'm of the opinion that what has been suggested so far by the developer will not do that. And therefore, I ask you to sustain the, the decision of the design review board. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next caller, please. Thank you, Mr. Fabian.
Jocelyn Gindrox, Jocelyn? Jocelyn, can you hear us?
Yes, I can hear you.
Go ahead, you're live.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor Agajanian, council members and staff. My name is Jocelyn Gindro, co-owner of 2,480 East Chevy Chase Drive adjacent to 910 Laird. We previously sent an email and a packet with photos in October 2020 regarding our concerns, which you should already have in the docket. We are voicing our comments to the hydrology report submitted to staff. The location of the natural flood outlet where it exits our property at 2,480 East Chevy Chase Drive and where it enters 912 Laird Drive was not changed by us through any means, including landscaping or otherwise. For details, please refer to the PDF PowerPoint presentation initially submitted by Mr. Graham Whistler to the city council in October 2020. The natural flood inlet that enters our property from the wilderness was obstructed, not allowing water to flow whatsoever, was altered by Mr. Monroe as illustrated in the two photos attached in our email of March 24th, shared with us by our neighbor, Mr. Darren Rohan, taken between January 2012 and March 2014, which was three to five years before we purchased our property. To correct it, my husband and I personally cleared the channel on our property using shovel to clear the path for the water to flow. Off note, Mr. Coco Panoshan, Deputy Director of Community Services and Parks, came along with then-city arborist Jeremy Khan on March 20, 2018, to make sure the natural flood outlet was not obstructed as it entered from the wilderness. On March 26 and 27, 2018, Mr. Panoshan sent Albert and his crew from the Glendale Youth Authority for the overall clearing and cleaning effort of the brush and debris. Mr. Monroe needs to show a drainage plan that addresses how the floodwater will exit his property so it does not flow straight to our garage structure. At its current condition, grading, elevation, et cetera, the floodwater flows to the storm drains on either side of Laird with no problem. Mr. Monroe and his team should stop making any references to the landscaping efforts on our property because they do not and should not have any bearing on what he is proposing on his building project.
Thank you. Okay, you have two...
I believe his proposed six-foot masonry wall will obstruct the natural flood outlet, elevated grade...
I'm sorry, I'm very, I'm very sorry. You passed the two minutes limit.
I thought I had three minutes, sir.
I gave you two minutes and 30 seconds. It's two minutes now. Thank you. Next one.
John Wells, John, you're live, you have two minutes. John?
Yes, thank, yes, thank you for taking my call. I'm kind of new to this, but I did become aware of the project, and I have seen the property, spoke to the architect and Mr. Monroe. One of my neighbors sent me some articles from a local publication, the Chevy Chase publication. And when I read it, it read like a smear campaign. This family's been maligned. They've lied about the facts. The, the family, Monroe family's been attacked. And I believe most of the people that are against it don't know all the facts. The property is a beautiful property. It's almost two acres. And, you know, they do call it Chevy Chase Estates, not Chevy Chase Track Homes. So they should put a beautiful home up in there. It's a very private property. I believe all the drainage issues have been addressed by a professional hydrologist. And from what I understand, it's really a case of sour grapes if somebody else wanted to buy the property and was outbid. So, taking all these facts, let the family have their home. Nobody on this council, nobody in this city would want to be treated the way this family's been treated. It's obscene. And you really should do justice and let them build their home. Thank you very much.
Thank you, John. Next caller, please.
Lou Fabiano, Lou? Lou, can you hear me? Lou Fabiano?
Yes.
Can you hear me? You have two...
I can hear you.
You have two minutes, sir.
Oh, uh...
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Naj, uh, Agajanian?
Yes.
And city council?
We are listening.
Yes, yes, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead. I can hear you.
Okay, good.
Can you turn off your TV or lower the TV?
Yeah, I'm gonna do that right now.
Or go away from the TV, so then we'll be okay.
Yeah, okay, here I am. Anyway, I am not in support of building this home. I believe that it should, the, the appeal should be denied, as such as the DRB did. The efficacy of that, of that hydrologist's report is in question. There also is another question about the other driveway that they sort of skirted the issue that kind of goes around the side of the back of Mr. Rohan's property. In front of that, next to the 2,506 property, there are a, a lot of sandbags and, and some piping that have been there for about three years now that apparently was put there by Mr. Monroe. If there wasn't any drainage issues, the question in my mind, first of all, is why are those sandbags there? He was asked to remove them. He never did. Next to the sandbags, about 20 or 30 feet up, there are, there is up on the hill, some lumber stacked up, and there are some chain link fence wrapped up, sitting up there on the hill that, that are a hazard. And, and I'm really, I'm really afraid of the hazards of this project overall. The nuisance dust and, and the noise from the drilling, of course, is, is gonna be very objectionable to the neighbors 2,480 and up. The, the main problem I have also is with the amount of trucks, backhoes, tractors going up and down that street and dump trucks. Who can guarantee the safety of those homes on both sides and of the motorists and walkers, joggers, children and, and the elderly walking up and down Chevy Chase during this construction? I, I really think that that was overlooked and should be emphasized. The privacy issues are quite obvious, even though I think 2,480 has done a magnificent job of, of doing landscaping. I really would urge the city council to, to review this additionally, please.
Thank you.
You're welcome, thank you.
Next caller.
Mayor, that was the last caller, and we will stop taking new calls for, at this point.
Okay, thank you. Okay, is there any comment by my council colleagues? Ms. Divine?
Okay, I'll, I'll be happy to start the conversation. I first want to confirm my position on this case and that the last remaining concern I have is in regard to the site drainage, which currently exits the adjacent property at 2,480 Chevy Chase and flows to Laird Drive. During the October 30, 20th hearing, I found that, number one, the water in the drainage channel on the neighbor's property, 2,480 East Chevy Chase again, currently exits the channel at the property line and continues to flow without any restrictions to Laird Street. That's now. In the site plan for the appellant's property, it appears to show that the drainage channel may be blocked at its current exit location when the appellant's driveway and/or block wall is constructed, thereby causing that stormwater to be redirected back into the neighbor's property, which would result in the flooding of the neighbor's garage. At the conclusion of the hearing, council member Najarian suggested, and I supported that, that a professional hydrologist submit a water flow plan that indicates that there would be no negative impacts on the adjacent neighbor. Well, the hydrologist submitted his report, and he concluded with this statement. The construction of the proposed driveway at 910 Laird Drive will have no impact on the flow to Laird Drive. He didn't say anything about the neighbor whose garage could be flooded. While certainly very comprehensive, I have one concern. The report clearly states that the construction of this proposed driveway will match the existing grades for the first 30 feet and will have no impact on the flow to Laird Drive. However, it does not specifically address the intent of council's direction that the construction of the driveway and/or block wall would not negatively impact the neighboring property. That's my position. With this in mind, I would support the appeal, and I'm agreeing with Ms. Heron, to rescind the DRB decision if the following condition is included as part of council's decision. And this is the condition. The final approved plans for the 910 Laird project shall clearly show and/or state that the existing site drainage from the channel on the 2,480 Chevy Chase property, which exits at the property line and flows to Laird Drive, shall in no way be blocked, impeded, restricted and/or redirected by the raising of the existing grade elevations, constructing of the driveway, constructing of a wall, or installing a wrought iron gate across the flow path. Otherwise, I will sustain the DRB decision to deny the project.
Is there any other comment by my council colleagues?
Let me just be clear. So that, your first part was to impose those conditions for the reversal of the DRB denial, for approval of the project, basically.
If they can, if they can, you know, make, we can make this condition that they will not make any construction of a wall or block wall or anything that blocks that exit. Because if they block the exit, the water will flow into the garage of the neighbors. I'm not opposed to them building the house. I'm, I want to make sure that the, the house at, what is it, 2,4...
80. 2,480.
Chevy Chase is, is not flooded and that the water flow is not...
Impeded.
Blocked or diverted into their garage.
Okay.
Is there any other comment? Otherwise, I would go to motion to reverse design review board's decision.
Well, 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 well...
Well, so I will... I'll go, Mr. Mayor, just, I'll be brief. I will, those, those were my concerns last time. And I think it's important that we are absolutely clear that there is no water diversion or blockage or impediment for the free flow of that down to Chevy Chase. I'm not sure if that's what the engineer wanted to say, but I think we want it to be crystal clear on that. And I will support your motion and second your motion, Ms. Divine.
Oh, thank you. Thank you.
Is there any other comments? Mr. Saki?
You know, during the last time this issue was before us, I commented that the house was a very fine house. I'm glad that it's, however, been reduced in size, albeit by approximately 200 or so square feet and some change. You know, ultimately, though, I, I, you know, we do want to make sure that this, this area, which is part of a precious ecosystem in terms of, if you have ever driven through Chevy Chase Canyon, I have many, many times. It is a very, very unique place, and we have to make sure that it's preserved and balance that with the reality of some of these housing development projects that are suggested. I think, you know, kudos to council member Divine, who was able to articulate all the points very well, obviously, has studied this, been to the site. I've probably driven by the site, but I haven't been to the site specifically for this project. But I think, taking into consideration what she has stated, I would be inclined to support her motion to reverse the DRB's ruling and uphold staff's recommendation as well. But we have to be aware that, you know, sometimes when these DRB issues, these design review board issues come to us, they come to us with a fever pitch. And I do want to remind folks that ultimately, at the end of the day, this is a family that wants to make Glendale their home, and we have to welcome them. And to the Monroes, you know, I know this has been painful for you, but there's a reason why there's a process to ensure that this is as much for you as it is for us and the community and the city, because you will be a part of this community. We have to make sure that the chaparral, the mountain, the hillsides, the drainage and those, the water pathways are all protected.
Thank you, Mr. Bat. Mr. Bat.
Yeah, I just want to make a, a comment because I'm gonna be a no on this. I, I want to explain why before we do roll call. So if you go back to the, the last meeting on this in, in October of last year, my issue with the original appeal wasn't solely this question of drainage. the original appeal wasn't solely this question of drainage. I had kind of another issue, which is I just wasn't convinced of the argument that the DRB process was flawed. And as I said at the time, I didn't see, you know, a strong case that the DRB failed to provide predictability or uphold the spirit of design guidelines. And the reason for that is that back in April 2018, the DRB heard a proposal for a 3,396 square foot house that they returned for redesign with four conditions, and one of them was to reduce the square footage or mass of the house to be more in keeping with other properties in the neighborhood. Then it came back to the DRB in January of 2019. The house was reduced by 6%, roughly, more or less, and DRB denied that version with five findings, and one of them that the size of the house is inappropriate for the neighborhood and should be reduced further. So there's a comment that, you know, the DRB did not consider the reduced size of the house, but I'm not convinced. I think, you know, there's a question, did the applicant meet the conditions? Yes, they reduced it. The applicant may feel that they did, you know, they did it sufficiently to meet the conditions, but ultimately, it's up to the DRB to decide whether they think their conditions were met and they decided that they did not. So, you know, I just think that, yeah, maybe they should have been more specific about what they wanted, but ultimately, it's their prerogative to decide whether the conditions they've set out are met and they decided they were not met. So, you know, I thought, looking at that, that the process, you know, did work and not a good outcome for the applicant at the time, but I think it did work. So that was my issue, wasn't just the drainage, and that's why I'm still going to stick with my vote from last time.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Brotman. Thank you. I just, I'm looking at this project as a professional engineer. 2000, when was this? I mean, sometimes before 2014, they started, I guess. However, this is 81,000 square foot of land. So maximum allowed FAR is, you know, the first 10,000 is like 30% and that the balance of it is 10%. It comes to 10,129 square feet. 122, 2014, they reduced it to 4,643 square feet. 811, 2016, reduced it to 3,740 square feet. 12, no, December 14, 2017, they reduced it to 3,515. This is, they went through the process, DRB and other staff and, okay. For 12, 2018, they reduced it to 3,496. 123, 2019, they reduced it to 3,275. So what they could have, they are permitted by our city, it should be 10,129. We went to 3,275. I mean, there should be an improvement there. We can't deny, otherwise, we'll be what we had before, that we denied the other project and then we caused damage to the city, we had to pay penalties. I can't imagine if, there should be no improvement there. For 81,000 square feet of land, 3,275 is .04%. It's such a small house for that property. Although, I don't want this, today's issue is just the rain drain. So, however, I don't want to see the neighbor to be damaged by floodwater. So, the only question is how to make sure that our staff, they're going to go and look at it and see that those floodwater or rainwater is not going to go to the neighbor's house. Other than that, this is such a clear project. What they have to do, I mean, to make a backyard for others, I mean, there should be a property there, improvement there. So I cannot imagine on 81,000 square feet, 3,275 square feet is not possible to fit in there. So with that, if there is a motion, what was, Ms. Devine, what you said about the water drain? I just want to hear to see if I'm agreeing to that.
The conditions that I talked about.
Just the water drain.
Yes, I will move to reverse the Design Review Board's decision and approve the project with the following condition. First, the existing drainage from the channel shall clearly show and/or state that the existing site drainage from the channel on 2480 Chevy Chase property, which exists at the property line and flows to Laird Drive, shall in no way be blocked, impeded, restricted, or redirected by the raising, by the raising, the existing grade elevations, constructing a driveway, constructing a wall, or installing a wrought iron gate across the flow path. In other words, they cannot block that flow. And flood the neighborhood house.
That's what I agree, that the neighbor should not be damaged through making another building or improvement and somebody else to be damaged. Okay, with that, is there any motion to approve?
That's my motion. I so moved.
Mr.? Okay, goodness. So we have the second also? Yes, I guess we have the second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Brotman?
No.
Devine?
Yes.
Kasakin?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Mayor Agajanian?
Yes. Thank you. Next, thank you. All those who participated, thank you for coming forward, explaining to us what we have to do. All right. Next item, please.
Next item would be number 10, Reports and Information, 10A Presentation on Riverside Drive Speed Limit Study.
Okay. Who's present? Dr. Golanyan, PE.
Mayor Agajanian, Member City Council, this item is brought to you in response to Councilmember Paula Devine's request into the possibility of reducing the speed limit on Riverside Drive. As it's not an urgent matter and it's past 11 o'clock, if you'd like, we can bring this back at a later date, otherwise.
Anybody is agreeing to bring this back at a later time? I guess this is not something that's urgent.
Agree.
Yes?
Agreed.
Okay, so we're going to move this. Okay?
Council, I mean, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Kasak.
I do want to bring up an issue that I should have at the beginning of the meeting. There has been some issues regarding the fireworks display in July up in CV, the annual Center Valley High School fireworks display. And I just want to put this on our radar at this point, that there may be some funding issues and potentially looking at where we are with COVID, where we are with gatherings. I don't want to wait too long until we have a discussion, doesn't have to come back immediately. But I do want us to look at what sort of support the city can give to make sure that any event happens is safe and reasonable and that, you know, has our support. If any council member would second that, and it can come back whenever staff has talked to the organizers to see what is needed.
I will second that. Oh.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Now.
Mayor, next.
Let's turn to the phone calls, right?
Mayor, yes. Next would be oral communications. I do not have any callers at this point. Would you like?
So we have to wait a little bit because I wish I would have said this before. Now, we will listen to any caller and you have five minutes now. So it's great to express your frustration or ideas or?
Mayor, I did put a minute on the time clock. As soon as it beeps, then we won't accept any more calls.
So is there any other item on the agenda?
No, Mayor.
Okay, I guess everybody's tired. They started going, leaving here. Okay, may I have a motion to adjourn? You don't have any phone calls?
No, not yet. But we do have 20 seconds left. Okay.
Do we have a call?
We have about 20 seconds left.
Oh, 20 seconds? That's okay.
Just because I said I've been.
May I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Is there? Okay, thank you.
Second.
With that said, meeting is adjourned at 11:05 PM. Thank you.
Good night.
Good night.
Right on time.